Good morning. I want the call to order, the March 25th, 2013 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, our Vice Chair Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
By with me, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and the blessings and opportunities you give us, and it's truly an opportunity that we can come and serve our county here, and we thank you for that, and we pray to just be with us in this meeting and be fair and just in all the deliberations, in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge and leave.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Caller, oh, gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Cookish.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve of the minutes.
Have a motion. And a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir, nothing's been withdrawn nor deferred.
Very good. Bond plat extensions, A, views at Lidle Creek, plat extension for one year. Do you want to do all of them?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, we'll do all.
And B is River Birch Estate subdivision, extension for one year. And C is Chestnut Valley Section 1, Phase 1, extension for one year. Any comments, Dale?
Yes, sir. What we've done is, you'll notice on your screen, I put a, we put a location for these, this one is Chestnut Valley. Yeah, just go and put the other, River Birch Estates, and then we have the views at Lidle Creek. The views at Lidle Creek was originally brought to us in 2006, so we've been extending it ever since. The developers indicated that he's putting this stuff together to start construction out there. River Birch Estates is, they've got quite a bit constructed in there. They're asking for a year because of the economic situation. Chestnut Valley was PRD, and same thing, we've got some indications that there might be some movement on that one. So recommending both, all of these bonds be extended for a year.
We have a staff recommendation. Any questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Item seven, submitted for preliminary plat approval, Farmington Section 5. This is a reapproval. Item 11-1003, 53 lots on 29.95 acres, is owned RM, located along Last Cassis Pike and Barlow Lane, Southern Venture Properties Developer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is Farmington Section 5. This property is loaded, located, excuse me, right off of Last Cassis Pike, and this particular section, as you can see on the plat, actually will access Barlow Lane. This plat was originally considered by the Planning Commission at their June 28th, 2011 meeting. However, there were never any final plats that were recorded off of this particular section, so the plat has expired. The developer has resubmitted. For the most part, the plat's in good order. There are a couple of issues that I'm going to let Mr. Corbett speak to as far as the drainage and the stormwater management of the property. One thing I did want to bring up, just for the board's consideration, this is something that can be handled fairly easily administratively. The original plat that came through had a different road name for this section. It was, believe, called Farmington Court. And, of course, this is Farmington Road right here. When a court doesn't run off of a road or a drive, generally, the E-911 doesn't particularly like that. So, this particular road being called Old Orchard Drive, E-911 approved Old Orchard Court for this particular road. Unfortunately, Old Orchard Court's already used over here, so the developer will just have to come up with a new road name that's approved by 911. Again, that's not something that I don't think you should have to hold up approval for. But, the other issues have to do with some of the stormwater issues on the property. I'm going to bring up another page of the plat for you to take a look at and zoom in, and I'll let Mr. Corbett kind of handle it from here.
As you know, when we, the current regs, because of redesigning these, and they weren't including the original design, they've got to come in compliance with the new stormwater regulations. On this particular plat, you'll notice that there's a pond there beside Lot 36, 136. That pond needs to be on its own separate lot, based on regulations, and all has to be in an easement. So, we've discussed this with the engineer, and their change, it shouldn't be a problem. The one by 135 there is actually not a pond, it's more of a slight depression easement type thing, so we're going to have him include that in an easement with Lot Number 135. So that needs to be taken care of. There are a few other minor things. They've got to add a pond. Go back over to the section, but first section.
Tell me which page I can open up.
Let's see. Which page is that? 11. This is, this is a pond we had, they have to put in because of the new stormwater regulations. This is over by Section 1, which goes into Bradley Creek. They have room to put it there in a common space, but again, this is required because of the new water quality standards. There are a couple of minor typos and stuff that they'll have to handle in this, but it's, we've gone over the design with our, with the engineer, and it meets our requirements. So, there, basically, we've gone over these construction plans several times, but there are some still minor changes that need to be made, but we recommend that you approve contingent upon us handling that at the construction phase.
Dale, I have a question on that Lot 135, where you said it's more of a depression and would remain with Lot 135. How do you make sure that that easement remains undisturbed? Because I know, for example, I used to have a neighbor back where I used to live, and he didn't like his ditch, so he filled it in to make it easier to mow. I'm sure it never in a million years occurred to him that was an easement, and he needed to leave it alone.
Well, you hit the key there. We'll make them put it in an easement, and the cases we run into where people are filling those easements, and we've had other people fill in actual ponds and different things, we go out and they have to dig it out.
Okay, so when, if it becomes problematic, because that's the only time you would come back and inspect it, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
Dale, if I remember correctly, the retention pond that's out near Jarren Branch before it goes into Bradley Creek is actually improving the runoff quality in the existing part of the subdivision, too. Is that not right?
That's correct. We've been able to divert, you know, take care of some other problems that we wanted in there, so. This pond is designed strictly for the quality portion, and the quantity portion will continue to be handled as it was originally designed.
The stormwater pond that's beside 136, is it going to be a pond all the time, or is it just going to be seasonal, like when it's wet?
Well, it'll, it's a detention pond, so it'll dry, it won't be continuous. Again, we'll bring up to you, next year, there's going to be a requirement for a retention that will require some of these ponds to be year-round, but this one is for detention that currently we only require to detain it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to our staff comments.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Item 8 is the final plat, but before we do that, we need to suspend the rules, I think, to revisit the preliminary plat. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, you see under the final plats, we're going to be looking at Sterling Ridge, Section 4. We looked at the preliminary, I believe, last month for this, but they've made some changes to the preliminary, which are reflected on the final, and we really need to reconsider the preliminary before we look at the final. So if we could have a suspension of the rules to reconsider the preliminary, I think that'd be in order.
Make a, second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Once again, this is the preliminary plat for Sterling Ridge, Section 4. Basically, what the change that you'll see on here, originally, the lot line here for Lot 12 and 12, I'm sorry, Lots 13, 14, 15, you can see back here the original property line. Lot 12, when it was originally platted, actually, you watch the hand on the screen there, kind of went down around like this. That was never really what the developer intended, I don't believe, but what they're doing now is, you can see, this is Lot 12, 13, and 14, the original property line, these were at one time extended all the way back to this line. By doing so, they've also taken this leftover area, which was originally part of Lot 12, and are combining it with this existing acreage over here and making it its own lot, which is basically Lot 29. It already has road frontage along Allen Road, and will have road frontage along Rockingham Drive, and you can see that they're stopping it right about in here, so there's some remaining property, which is reserved for future development for this particular subdivision. There were some, also some drainage issues with this, and I'll let Mr. Corbett handle that, if you had any additional comments on that.
No, the original, the drainage issues that we ran into were minor compared to, so basically what they, this is basically a survey and change. They hasn't changed the drainage for the subdivision that was approved last time, and so it still meets our requirement, Mr. Chairman.
So is this going to be a buildable lot, or this is an area for future development, or are they leaving it like it is?
Are you talking this area back here?
29.
No, it's already got a house on it, it's right here.
They're not changing that?
No, ma'am, they're not.
And all the lots still meet the requirement, square footage and everything else?
Yes, sir. I will say that Lot-
Rear lot line a little bit on all of the lots.
That's correct. And Lot 15 is actually going to be, as I recall, it's Lot 15, it's a non-buildable lot. This is for stormwater detention, so this lot will be its own lot for stormwater. There won't be any houses on that one.
I think the motion will prove it.
Motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now we're ready for final plat approval. A, Sterling Ridge, Section 4, and the second re-subdivision of Lot 12. Do we already do that?
Uh, well, this is the final for that same development, so it's-
Lot 12, Section 3, item 13-1002, 17 lots, 16 residential lots, and one detention lot on 14.14 acres, owned RM, located off Allen Road, Harold Homes Incorporated Developer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, this is the same subdivision we just considered on the preliminary plat. This is consistent with what was submitted with the preliminary, and everything appears to be in order with it as far as the staff is concerned, unless, Mr. Corbett, you have any other comments? Okay. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
This complies with preliminary plat, I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Staff reports, comments?
Yes, sir. Well, really, the only staff report we have is going to be on the subdivision regulations, but before we get into that, I did want to just take a moment to kind of make just a quick announcement. Ms. Emslie, Elizabeth Emslie's been working with us now since 2007, I believe, six, 2006, I'm sorry? 2008? Really? Okay. Time flies. But, she's been a very great person to work with and a wonderful employee here, but she's decided to resign her position with the county to undertake some new endeavors. We're going to miss her here. Always enjoy talking to her when she's here and the work she's done. She's first-rate. I'd put her against any planner in the state and the country for that matter. But, of course, I know, I think I speak for everybody, that we're going to wish her well, that we will miss her not being here, but I didn't know, Elizabeth, if you had any comments you wanted to say or anything. She probably hates me right now for putting her on the spot like this, but-
I really enjoyed working with you, and I will miss everyone. I do appreciate all the opportunities I've gotten from Rutherford County, but I'm going to take this opportunity to further my education and get a master's degree in economics.
Oh, congratulations.
Thanks. So I will miss you all, but I'll still be around in town, so I might run into you.
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay, with that, I guess at this point, I think we're ready to go ahead and get into the work session on our subdivision regulations. Hopefully, everybody's-
I have one question.
Yes, Greg.
Doug, is there any way we, as a planning commission, with the exit out of Epps Mill, that it seems like we've got to have development before we have the exit, we've got to have the exit before we have development? Is there anything we, as a planning commission, can do? Send a letter, request to what, to state that people need a solution to the problem out there even before there is development? Is there anything that can be?
Well, I think if you'd like, I mean, I think you could, you know, ask staff to maybe try to draft something for the state, or for, maybe for Senator Tracy, who I know is over the, as far as I know, still over the Transportation Committee at the state. I know he's aware of that whole situation down there, because I think some of the commissioners have had some conversations with him about that. I will say that, you know, they are aware of it. We've got a, an interchange modification study before the MPO that TDOT is supposed to be undertaking. It's on their plan this year to do. Hopefully, that's something that they will be doing upcoming soon. So they are aware of the issue. I mean, if you'd like to ask staff to, you know, try to come up with a letter to kind of try to justify something being done here to help maybe further that cause, we'd be happy to do that. I know the county commission in the past has sent resolutions to TDOT regarding, I think it was Lebanon Road, 231 North. I know that there was something that was done a few years ago to that effect. I mean, I don't think that's improper by any means. Something like that, maybe the planning commission would like to do something like that as a possibility. Unfortunately, it's, and it is on the county, or it's on the state's long-range transportation plan for action at some point now. It is a longer-range project, I will, I will say that, but, you know, currently, that's just kind of where it is. You know, there's a lot of priorities in the state, and, you know, unfortunately, this one right now is just not that far along, because it's, we know something needs to be done, but at this point, there's not been really any engineering work besides, Mr. Huddleston did something for Epps Mill itself, but not so much with the interchange. So until something with interchange is done, you know, I imagine it'll probably still kind of remain a lower priority for TDOT, but that's, those are some options that are out there, I think.
Really don't sound like a home-run option, so.
I'm not aware of anything right now, but I, like I said, we are trying to keep it on TDOT's radar, we are trying to keep it on the MPO's radar with things. You know, I had some conversations with the, with Michael Skipper, the chair, or the executive director of the MPO just not that long ago, about where things were with the improvement, or with the study at least, and he was going to look into that for me. So at this point, it's just, it's just an, I guess. But I agree, I mean, something does, and I think everybody pretty much agrees, something needs to be done out in that area. It's been something that we should, that hopefully the state will look at doing in the near term.
Because we continue to see developments come to us, and the community meetings, they, that's one of the arguments, and, you know, you gotta, I guess you gotta check off, take a checklist, and that's one we need to check off if we could, so.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
You know, we went to the Power of Ten Conference last year, there was a speaker from the Tennessee Department of Economic Development, and I think they talked about having, you know, properties ripe and ready for development, and so that they could go market those. And that was the same sort of thing that John Harney spoke to us about, was that if you're not, if you don't already have the proper zoning, then you're not even on anybody's map, they won't even stop and look at you.
Right.
I don't pretend to understand the web of state government, but I'm just curious.
I don't either.
I wonder if it'd be effective at all to send something to someone at that Tennessee Department of Economic Development and say, hey, we want to be on your radar, can you help us lobby for this improvement at this interchange, because there's ample land, there's, appears to be some interest, you know, and we've already identified that it's going to be sort of an industrial corridor, we think, you know, because, or at least a job corridor. So, I don't know if that's an avenue to take or not.
I mean, it's something, again, that we can, we can explore. I mean, I don't think it hurts to ask the questions, and just to say, you know, what, you know, what we heard at a lot of those public hearings was, of course, what the developers' take is on a lot of this funding. I mean, maybe have, get someone from the department to kind of give us an idea, not that I think that, that what he said wasn't accurate, but I think it would probably have more credence coming from a state office as opposed to the developer possibly. So, I don't think it would hurt to try to find out.
Doug, as we were, as you mentioned over here at that Power of Ten meeting, one of those speakers was the Commissioner of Transportation, and one of the statements he was making was the availability of funds to make those changes to those interchanges. And right now, the Department of Transportation is not making that many changes, because the funds that they have is primarily for maintenance and what they're doing right now. But if, I don't see where there's any, any problem with us going ahead and drafting something to go ahead and send to Senator Tracy, and we could also, in that same draft, send it to Representative Sparks, who's also Vice Chair on the Transportation Committee for the House.
Mm-hmm.
And especially with our Rutherford County delegations to make those, you know, make our comments felt, and where we need to go from there.
If I may add something else to that, I know that the Chamber Economic Development met with Commissioner Diggs last July in regards to this property, and, or at least the interchange, not this property. But basically, on TDOT's radar, this is about a 10-year-away project. He said unless there is a catalyst, which would mean outside folks, you know, raising their hand to try and get this noticed, which maybe could go to seven years. So, I like the idea of a letter, but I would also perhaps have you include Brian Hercules, who's the new economic development with the Chamber, and let him put in his two cents worth, because from the economic development standpoint, we're running out of good land to develop, and, and as Holly Sears in the past, and now Brian would tell you, you have to have these sites ready to go before anybody would even take a sniff at it, so. It is a conundrum that we're in on this particular piece of property in this intersection, but I would include Brian Hercules with any correspondence, or have him also either support the same one or have him draft his own in addition to ours, to try and spark a little interest.
Yeah, we can turn a little into that, absolutely.
I think it's an opportunity, Doug, for the staff to kind of consider some of these comments and, and just do some background, and kind of report back to us probably a month from now, as to what you've decided to do, or, and where we are with all of that, just whenever you get ready.
Yes, sir.
But instead of just, maybe we can do that, why don't we, why don't you consider something to do, several good suggestions, and then report back to us as to what we have done.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound right?
Yes, sir. I think we can do that.
A month, two weeks or a month from now is fine.
Okay.
No big deal.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, another question for Doug, just old business. Jim brought up a great point at the end of our last meeting, that I think we all sort of felt, that it didn't really sort of feel right to be charging the farmers a fee to keep their land agriculture, to move it to an agricultural zone, because that had never been an option previously. Were you ever able to have a conversation with the mayor about that?
I had, he was out of town all last week, and I didn't really have a chance to bring it up before he went out of town, but I know he's back in.
Will you follow up on that?
I can, yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
We'll kind of go out of our regular session now and begin our study and consideration for our subdivision regulations, and Dale, you're going to run the show?
I think we'll kind of share the microphone here, sir. Well, we're happy to be able to provide to you the draft, and again, it is just a draft. We do anticipate there'll be changes as we, as we go forward with this, to the subdivision regulations. We did forward you a draft, what we're considering today, as long with an addendum of some other changes that we know need to be made and added into the regulations. But before I get started, I just want to introduce our consultants that have helped us through this project, they're sitting on the, on the back there. We have Mr. Brett Smith and Mr. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith and Associates. They've been instrumental in helping us put this together and getting a draft into the format that you have before you today. Basically, what we're going to do is just kind of run through just some of the major, well, literally, the major changes that we have in our regulations that we're proposing. We've had some discussion about this already, so I don't think what you're going to be hearing today is going to be necessarily anything new as far as some of the process is concerned. However, there are a few issues that we would like to get some more input from you on, namely, some of the road specifications, bonding requirements. Those are some things that we've made some fairly significant changes to, that Mr. Corbett will go over in a little more detail. One other issue that, we know, we've kind of talked about this over the last few months in some of our training sessions, dealing with fire hydrant requirements and how we want to handle that. But before we get into that, I think what I'll just do real fast is just kind of go through some of the, the big changes to process. And really, what you're going to see in the subdivision regulations is, there are changes, I think we've streamlined quite a few things, but you're not necessarily going to see the level of changes that we did in the zoning. The zoning ordinance was pretty much an entire overhaul from what we had originally, going to an entire new zoning system. It's not really so much like that with the subdivision regulations. The changes, while, that, while there are several changes and fairly significant changes, I don't think they're to the level that we saw with the zoning, so we don't anticipate this being nearly as controversial or contentious as some of the things we're proposing in the zoning ordinance was. So, with that being said, you know, just kind of going through some of the proposed changes, probably one of the biggest changes that we're going to see is the way that we handle classification of subdivisions currently. You know, currently, we break down the plats into minor and major subdivisions. We are still going to have that distinction between the two types, however, currently, it's done by the number of lots. If you have basically anything, three lots or less, it's considered a minor subdivision under our regulations. If you have four lots or greater, it's considered a major subdivision, and that's what break, that's what kicks in the requirements for preliminary plats and those kind of things. Generally, with a minor, we just see a final plat. What we're proposing, as opposed to using the number of lots to determine what makes up a major versus a minor subdivision, we're proposing using what kind of improvements they're going to make. So, for example, a major subdivision would be a division of land into two or more lots that includes anything like extending a public street, dedicating a right-of-way, anything that includes new drainage easements, those kind of things.
It's on page five.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's on page five of the draft that you have before you. And it would be irregardless of the number of lots, again, as long as it met that definition of two or more lots, it would be considered a major subdivision. A minor subdivision would be anything, any subdivision of land, regardless of the number of lots, that didn't include anything that you see on page five, any of those type of improvements that you would see. So in theory, you could have 15 or 20-lot minor subdivision plat. Now, those would still come before you for consideration, so it doesn't get out of your hands at that point, but it would be something that, there'd be a different standard of review, because there wouldn't be as much work going on in the plat as far as road extensions and those kind of things. The third type that is being proposed, and it's, this is really more what we would do administratively, is a partition plat, and this would just be a division of land that's fronting along an existing street, no new utilities are proposed, nothing like that, creating not more than two lots, and state law gives us the ability to approve those administratively even now. We call them minor plats, but for the purposes of what we would be using the subdivision regulations for, we would just call those partitions. So, again, under the new regulations, a major would be anything really that has right-of-way extension, utility extensions, roads, anything like that. A minor subdivision would be any plat that doesn't include anything, you know, regardless of the number of lots, whereas a partition would just be anything, two lots or less, that we would handle administratively, as we currently do. We just consider them minor plats.
I still don't get the distinction between minor and partition.
Basically, a minor plat would be anything that would have to come to you as a, as being approved by the Planning Commission, basically three lots or greater. Partition would be anything, two lots or less, that we could do administratively, what it boils down to it.
If you had, so the minor would be if you, you know, sometimes we see those things where they just adjust a lot on a plat that's already there. You could handle that administratively?
Yes, sir. I think we could. Yeah, a minor subdivision would be something like if you had an existing road and somebody wanted to subdivide 10 lots off the existing road, you know, just kind of going down the road, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, down the road. They weren't extending any utilities, they weren't extending any new roads or anything like that. Since it's over two lots, that would still have to come before you for approval, but we wouldn't need to see any kind of preliminary plat for it or anything like that. That'd be considered a minor plat.
If they do two lots, six months, two lots, that, that goes under the radar, right? Instead of doing all ten at one time?
Yeah, I know we had something in the zoning, and I'm not sure if we actually put that in here or not, that kind of, they put like a time limit on there. I know we did put something like that in the zoning ordinance, it said if you had a certain amount of improvements within eighteen months or something with each other, then you really couldn't do that as a way not to get under the radar like that. But, you know, honestly, I'm not sure if we included that in here, but I think that's something that we could certainly add in here just to try to avoid that from happening. Let me put that note down. Any other questions or comments?
I have two questions regarding the easements. Just wanna be sure, I wanna talk about dedication of easements. If you have, for instance, an existing power line running across the property, that does not, that easement does not turn that into a, from a partition to a subdivision, does it, an existing power line easement?
I don't think so, because it's an existing line. I think what this is referring to, I think you're talking about me going from major to minor, is that, I think, kind of what you're saying? Because it says the dedication of a right-of-way or easement for construction of any public utility, if it's already in existence, then it's shown on the plat as.
Middle Tennessee Electric, I'm assuming, assuming they still require that, even if you build a house, you've got to grant them an easement to run utilities to that house. Now, granting of that easement, does that throw it into a subdivision?
No, it doesn't. There's a, when you look at the improvements, well, but basically, under state law, there actually says specifically in state law that the extension of a utility to serve a house doesn't count as extension of utilities. So, based on TCA, yeah, I mean, that's not so much spelled out here, but that is spelled out more in state law, that that's not considered an extension, if it's just for that service to that house, right, that doesn't count for that.
Of course, there could be times when the electric co-op could say, hey, you're building a house here from here to here, and we can see future development down there, and we may want to move our main line down. That'd be a gray area at that point in time?
Yeah, I mean, something like that we'd probably deal with on a case-by-case basis, but honestly, if.
Homebuilders, homeowners fault, they might just be in a position where that needs to
Ms. Allen, I think, kind of made reference to that, is how we handle the review procedure
be done.
Yeah, and I think we would just deal with that on a case-by-case. You know, there may be some situations where that would, you know, we would have to bring for major subdivisions, minors, and partitions. it in as a, as a major because of that, but, you know, for seldom, at least, we don't Now, currently, whenever we see a major subdivision, you'll recall, we typically see a preliminary plat, like we did today. see that just terribly often, so I think we could handle that as a, on a case-by-case. Then after the preliminary plat, you know, then typically the staff will see construction Any other questions before I move on to the next item I want to talk about? drawings, and after the construction drawings, work typically begins on utilities and the roads and the grading and drainage, that kind of thing in the subdivision.
On those review procedures, just below that, I just want to make sure I was clear.
And then when they get to a certain point where they feel they're ready to start selling
On the minor subdivision, there's no preliminary plat, and on the partition, it's administrative
lots, that's when we'll see the final plat of the development.
review only?
That's correct. We're really not proposing any significant changes as far as the number of meetings and
Should we put this up on the screen for the?
Would it be easier if we pulled this on, pulled this up for the screen for y'all to how that is structured. However, what, the difference that you will see is, on the front end, what you're gonna look at as we go, or does everybody have a copy? see is gonna be called a preliminary plan as opposed to a preliminary plat.
Yeah.
Do you want, I mean, the acuity that from there in?
Because people in the audience listen to it.
Now, the difference between that and what you currently see is the preliminary plan's really gonna be more of what you would consider the master plan for the subdivision. Let's see.
We got these high-dollar screens, we'll as well use them.
It'll have your road layouts, general lot configurations, it'll have kind of a drainage,
That's right.
it won't be as specific in drainage as you currently see, but they'll at least have the general concept down on the plat for you to take a look at. And the reason we're proposing to do it that way is, as a planning commission, I think one of your responsibilities is really looking at the big picture of a subdivision and how it fits into the larger context of the area and the county in general, not so much looking at the specifics of pipe sizes, easement widths, those kind of things. So, the preliminary plan, it will be similar to what you currently look at, but probably not quite as detailed as you see on a preliminary plat. After the preliminary plan is approved by the planning commission, then the engineer for that development will submit the construction drawings and improvements to staff as their construction drawings for a particular section. So, you would see the overall master plan, then the developer would come in and say, okay, this is what I want to do for Section One of the subdivision, these are the construction drawings. Staff would look at that administratively, again, as far as looking at the drainage calculations, pipe sizes, all that different kind of thing, you know, where ponds are located, all those type of issues. And then construction could begin as soon as those issues were taken care of. Now, you would still see a final plat for that subdivision, similar to what you saw today, you know, that part wouldn't change. And when we were going through this, I think some of the comments we heard from the, just some of the folks that we asked was, you know, first of all, is this going to lengthen the approval process, and, you know, we don't want to put developers in a situation where they're doing more meetings than they're currently doing. And of course, our answer to that is no, that's, basically, it'll still be a two-meeting process. There'll be a preliminary plan, which will kind of, again, be the master plan, then their next time, you would see them would be at the final plat phase, when they're getting ready to record a section. Now, if there are changes to the preliminary plan as time goes on, because maybe they run into something from a drainage standpoint, you know, they got in the field, they realize this isn't gonna work, there are things that trip that to bring, brought back to you for a re-review of the preliminary plan. So, it's not just you see it one time and you'll never see it again if there's changes. I mean, any kind of change to the overall preliminary plan, again, the master plan for the subdivision, would be brought back to you, you know, and the major changes, it's one thing if they're just shifting a road a few feet, you know, though there are certain things that we can look at as staff that we could approve administratively, but if they're gonna be, you know, adding lots, changing the way they're doing their drainage or something like that, their overall drainage, those are things that we would bring back to you, and that's something that, from a staff standpoint, we'll keep a close eye on from.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments on this. When they bring in the preliminary plan, I mean, the plan, master plan for us to look at, when they bring in the construction drawings, if the, and they want to do Section One, if their construction drawings are not for the whole project, or just for Section One, that ties in Section One as far as the engineering calculations. But if they bring in Section Two, two years later, and the regs have changed as far as stormwater, whatever, then the Section Two portion has to be designed based on the new regs. If when they do the preliminary, the master plan, if they bring in the total construction drawings, total engineering calculations for the whole plan, then that ties in that whole plan, and so if they bring in Section Two, two years later, and the regs change, they still go by the regs that were in place when they brought it in. Now, Todd's spent a lot of time talking to the state, trying to figure out how we're gonna do this, and it's all tied down as to how complete their engineering calculations are for the plan at the time they submit their section or however they want to do the plan. So, there's, if you notice at Farmington, the section we just brought in, they had to put in a new pond, that's because it wasn't part of the original plan, and so they had to comply with the new stormwater regulations. Let's give you another example, let's say you had a temporary, your master plan today, and you do Section One, but you only do Section One of that plan, and the next year you do Section Two. Well, next year, we know they're gonna change the regs to require some retention versus detention now, so they'd have to do the retention. Whereas if they did the whole plan for that master plan this time, then next year, when they bring it in, they wouldn't have to do the retention. So, the key here is, on the stormwater portion, is the state telling us that that's what's gonna tie in, it's what they do in the next phase. Now, some of the developers are saying, well, I just want to do Phase One, and I don't want to pay for the engineering on the other phases now. So, it becomes an economic decision at that time, but the decision in our office would be driven by the, what we've been told we have to do from the state. So, there's, this is a little different than what we've been looking at also when we look at these plans.
Is there a time limit on that, Dale, because, you know, the Farmington was originally probably, the original plat was probably eleven years old maybe now, and, you know, the regulations have changed, so if you do a plat and you do, you know, a master plan, and then the, and then another economic downturn, and it's ten years, is that still viable to be able to go back to that original plan then?
Well, again, we've talked to the state about this and how they're gonna handle it, because that's how they evaluate our program when they come in and do the audit. There is no time limit on what you're talking about. What determines if they have to change is if, has the regulation changed? Now, they reissue our permit every five years, and then usually in the reissuance of that permit, they'll give you things that are gonna happen, and they have given us a leeway to kind of phase those out. In some areas of the country, they don't, they all take place at one time. So, we're trying to work with that, but in your situation, had the, the master plan, had they brought that in, everything was designed, but they can't do that next phase for, you know, eight, ten years, then they would still be tied into that, that first design. However, again, if they only designed that first section, ten years later, they may have to redesign that whole thing as far as how they handle the stormwater or the other requirements that are, that come in on.
Particularly tricky too, because at Farmington, the rear section that we just saw is running through the front section, and it all ends up together, so.
It was a real challenge area-wise, because when we did that first section, we, they didn't set aside anything for these ponds, but then the state says, no, you still, now you have to design those ponds in there, and so because of the elevation of drainage and stuff, that's end up where they end up putting them, but you're correct, it becomes a real challenge.
So, Dale, there's no time constraints on the master plan, is that what you're saying?
Well, Doug hasn't got into, but what, what we're getting in, you know, right now, we are, each year they're coming back and say we want an extension on these things, and we have no constraints. What we've written into these is a two-year constraint. In other words, if you bring us in a PUD or even just a regular master plan right now, but because economic situation, you can't develop, you decide not to develop it, you know, two or three, four years down, right, so that second year, it expires, and they have to bring it back to you.
Okay.
Is there, will there be enough information on, on the preliminary, enough calculations or map or plat or whatever, that we can look at it, and if it's an area that we might be familiar with, or we've gotten a call on it, you know, and they say, hey, there's water stands there, will we be able to determine, you know, pretty well that it's gonna drain, and you'll have an idea how it's gonna drain, or whatever the problem is?
Well, what we anticipate when they bring in these master plans is a, is a general drainage scheme. What we do in the office is we pull this up on GIS, we, based on our knowledge that we've had of the area, that we have a problem, that kind of stuff. When we present it to you, it will not have the, I don't anticipate it having the topo on it, but with the new technology, we can pull up, we'll pull up those sites on the GIS, and you'll be able to look at those, all the pictures and topo we have. If you, as an individual, say, well, I live in this area, I know this back area, and when it rains, we usually have water there for, you know, two weeks or whatever, at that time, you would, and hopefully, let us know, so that when we get into the construction drawing or the design phase, we can handle some of that.
Dale, to protect, to protect the developer, is this etched in stone between Plan Department and the state, when he gives us his master plan for the whole thing, and he comes back in five years from now and starts to do some more of it, and the state says, no, 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 you misunderstood, you didn't, you don't have that option? Is that, is that a telephone conversation, or is it etched in stone that the state will remember that?
I will tell you, I will tell you this, to try to answer that, we've had situations where we were sure we knew what the state wanted, and we did that, and we were called and told differently. And I'll give you a specific example. And I brought this up before in other meetings, out in behind Royal Glen out there, there's a, his family's put in a big horse barn, it's for horse shows and private horse shows. The barn is, I don't know, thirty-five, it's a large, large barn. Well, when it was brought in, there's thirty-some acres out there, I think. It was decided it was all agriculture, because it's a horse barn, it's private, it's not for making money and that kind of stuff. The state said it was agriculture, we did too. Now, that means they're exempt from our regulations. We got some calls that there was mud going through Royal Glen in the ditch line, our guys went out and worked with them, they put a few cell fences and that kind of stuff, but somebody called the state. Well, the state had already made a decision it was agriculture, but they called us and they told, called Todd, and they called him, and he came in the office, he said, I got a little problem. He said, the state told me it is an agricultural operation, however, when they're building the barn, that's not agriculture. Now, once the barn gets built, it will become agriculture. So, we want you to go out and regulate this based on our stormwater regulations, where we've already told the people it's agriculture, and they don't have to comply. So, I only bring it up to let you know that.
It's not etched in stone.
It's not etched in stone, you know, and so, we just continue working, try to work with the individuals and with our state regulators as they pass down what they want to try to make sure we're in compliance.
Doug, under the review procedures, I looked for it, I didn't see, is there anywhere in here where developments that are within the urban growth boundaries of the municipalities, where there's an opportunity for them to look at them or possibly build, you know, build in some of their regulations?
There's nothing in these regulations.
I know there's a courtesy that you've done in the past.
Right. There's nothing in the regulations that specifically spells that out, but you're correct, whenever we see a development that we think's gonna have some sort of an impact on a municipality, we do alert them, well, what was the name of that one? Just, we just reviewed that one just a month or so ago. Name of it, it's a good, yes, that was it, thank you, Rose Ridge. That was pretty much in that area that was under annexation, but was also under litigation, and we sent a copy of that over to the city to have them comment, with the understanding they weren't using sewer. You know, basically, I think you recall that, you know, I had brought up several comments that the city had, of course, we couldn't subject anything to that, but developer was made aware of it.
And that's my, that's my question.
Right. There's nothing in here that says that, no, ma'am, there's not.
Could there be? It's just a question, should there be?
Well, I have no issue of putting something in there that says, you know, the, if it's within an urban growth boundary of one of the municipalities, the developers are encouraged to possibly meet with them to determine if they're.
But it's still all voluntary.
But it's still, yeah, it's still, we can't hold them to anything. You know, the city could come back, or Smyrna, Laverne, well, really just Smyrna, because Laverne's, doesn't really have much of an urban growth boundary, but, you know, one of them could come back and say, well, I think you should do it this way, and we can't hold them to anything. So, it'd just be, hey, this would be, we think it'd be a good idea if you did X, Y, and Z, I mean, that's all it would be. I mean, if you'd like us to put something like that in there, we'd be more than happy to do that.
I just wanted to bring it up for conversation, I'm not sure how anybody else feels about it, but.
Right. But, and I will say, you know, the city gets copies of our agendas, you know, if there's, and, you know, and Mr. Lewis, I don't know if he's here today, but he's spoken in the past at our meetings about issues that the city has concerns with, so we do stay in contact with them for these type of developments that are within their urban growth boundary.
Ms. Allen, I think that's a good comment, but there is a line too. It's either county or it's city. And so, I think you're holding the developer or the builder hostage, you know, on trying to jump through a hoop that they don't necessarily have to jump through. So, it's.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't want to, I don't, the city, I mean, not that I think they feel this way, but I don't want to give them false hope, the city false hope, thinking that they may be able to make, the developer make some changes to a development that we simply cannot hold them to. You know, it's one thing if they're using the city sewer, of course, because then they're required to go through the review process at the city as well as, as here in the county, that's a little different.
I think that's the only tie that we have.
Right.
Right there, and a responsibility of good planning, that's what we should be, you know, the city should be notified, or they will be. But as far as getting the agenda, I think as long as really and truly, not to sound rude, but I mean, as long as they're getting the agenda of this situation, they're made aware, and if they want to chime in, that's, they can chime in, but it's either in the city or the county.
Chime in like as they have in the past.
Yeah.
So, maybe you could just add the encouraged language for developers?
You can certainly do that.
But, but these are regulations, and either you can or you can't.
Right.
And the way I see it, you can place in here, we urge you to do something, and most cases, somebody's not gonna take that urge when it gets down to it. So, I think in a set of regulations, it's either you can or you can't.
Well, and I know some things belong to more of a policy statement than they do necessarily in the regulations, so if that's something you just want to include in your policies of, you know, office procedures.
We can see if we can't.
Yeah, you decide where it belongs.
Yeah, we can see if we can't come up with something for that, yes ma'am.
So, we're just gonna just talk about it.
Okay, just kind of following along with Mr., follow-up with Mr. Corbett was talking about as far as expiration dates on plats. Preliminary plans, if
they feel this way, but I don't want to give them false hope, the city false hope, thinking that they may be able to make the developer make some changes to a development that we simply cannot hold them to. You know, it's one thing if they're using the city sewer, of course, because then they're required to go through the review process at the city as well as here in the county. That's a little different.
I think that's the only tie that we have.
Right.
Right there. And a responsibility of good planning, that's what we should be, you know, the city should be notified or they will be. But as far as getting the agenda, I think as long as really and truly, not to sound rude, but I mean, as long as they're getting the agenda of this situation, they're made aware and if they want to chime in, that's, they can chime in, but it's either in the city or the county.
Chime in like as they have in the past.
Yeah.
So, maybe you could just add the encouraged language for developers?
You can certainly do that.
But, but these are regulations and either you can or you can't.
Right.
And the way I see it, you can place in here, we urge you to do something, in most cases, somebody's not going to take that urge when it gets down to it. So, I think in a set of regulations, it's either you can or you can't.
Well, and I know some things belong to more of a policy statement than they do necessarily in the regulations, so if that's something you just want to include in your policies of, you know, office procedures.
We can see if we can't.
Yeah, you decide where it belongs.
Yeah, we can see if we can't come up with something for that, yes ma'am.
So, we're just going to just talk about it.
Right.
Okay, just kind of following along with Mr., follow up with Mr. Corbett was talking about as far as expiration dates on plats. Preliminary plans, if you look on page seven, I was going forward to that. Effective period for preliminary plan approval, you'll see the approval, the preliminary plan shall be effective for a period of two years from the date, excuse me, of planning commission approval. Prior to expiration of the preliminary plan, such plan approval may be extended for one additional year upon request and if the planning commission deems such extension appropriate based upon progress made in developing the subdivision. So, I mean, you'll see, like, the one subdivision we looked at today was a plat extension and that's been extended probably six or seven times now. Every year it comes back and every year it's approved. Basically, any new subdivisions that come through under these regulations, they'd have two years under their first approval and then they'd have one extension of one year and after that, they would just have to resubmit. There'd be no further extensions after one year. So, it'd be basically a total of three years from the time the preliminary plan was approved. And that's to avoid the situations that we see with some of these plats that we have currently in the system that have been approved for, you know, five, six years and are just basically sitting out there.
But it's voided after that?
It's voided after, yes ma'am. Now, I will say that there are some legis, there's some legislation going through the state right now that may have some impact on that. I know that the state chapter of our planners endorsed a bill that would kind of make it a variable between one to three years. Basically, it's a bill that says, okay, once it's approved, it's approved under these set of regulations for somewhere between one to three years. There's another bill out there which I think is just a five-year, just one, there's no, there's no ability to be variable with it. It's basically five years.
It's approved for five years, they don't have to come back for an extension or anything, is that what you're saying?
Basically, yeah. Basically, wherever the standards it was approved under for five years, it would still be reviewed under those standards even if you completely overhauled your standards. Now, at this point, I don't know which bill or either bill are going to do much of anything, but we'll keep that, you know, in mind as we're going through these regulations. And those are things that we keep up with anyway because sometimes things change that we have to make changes to our regulations for. But we just happen to be going through this right now during this time, so we'll keep an eye on that and make the changes as necessary for that.
I have two questions in the paragraph just above that.
The 30 days to submit?
You've got the applicant for the commission.
Is it still on page seven?
I'm on that same page, yeah, just above that.
That large paragraph, okay.
Right, where it says, the applicant for the commission's approval may waive the time requirement and consent to an extension or extensions of the applicable time period.
Right.
Again, this may be a policy thing, but are you getting that documented and in writing? Are they signing something?
That would be, we'd ask for something in writing for that. What you're reading right here comes directly out of Tennessee code annotated. You see there's a, there's a reference down there, 13-3-404.
Right.
Basically, this is something that was approved, was this approved? It's been a few years now.
Just to cover your bases, I just think somewhere you need to have it documented.
Yes, and I agree, I think that that's a good idea, that that should be documented because basically what this is saying, what was happening, not really, not here, but what was happening in some other areas was that a plat would be submitted for a planning commission review and the planning commission really wouldn't take action on it. It would just be keeping deferred, 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 you know, six, eight months, however long it was. And this was put in, this particular law was put in the TCA to limit that. You know, basically, after a plat is considered for the first time at the planning commission, you have 60 days to take action on it. So, I mean, now you took action on the ones today, so it's really not an issue. But for, say, for the sake of argument, one of the plats that came up today, you had an issue with and you wanted to defer action. You could defer action up to 60 days. After the 60 days, if no action was taken, it would just be deemed approved.
But the way I read that, it was like the applicant could consent to an extension beyond those 60 days.
And they can, they can.
And so, I don't want to get into a he said, she said situation.
Right. We would ask for, yes ma'am, we would ask for something to put in the file saying that they're okay with an extension beyond the 60 days so they couldn't come back and say that.
And then near the bottom of that paragraph where it says, any plat submitted to the commission shall contain the name and address of a person whom notice of the hearing may be sent, is that, is that supposed to be like the applicant and that's who, that's who is applying?
Yes, yes.
So, when it's, when corporations are named, or individuals of that corporation name, principals of that?
That, or sometimes, what we typically see would be like the design engineer, you know, we let them know and then, you know, they let their applicants know.
So, my concern is that it may not belong here, it may belong somewhere else. But just for transparency in government, and this has always been a concern of mine, I think maybe a long time ago, I'd even mentioned this to you, which was, when you have a corporation make an application or a corporation is the developer, how do we know if we have a conflict if we don't know who the people are, who are behind the development? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, I feel like principals need to be named, we need to know more than just the name of a corporation of who's developing something.
Okay.
And again, I don't know where that lives.
Yeah, again, this wording here is directly out of the state law.
Right.
That's a good question and I've made a note of that to see how we might be able to handle. And again, it may be just as simple as.
I just want us to be transparent.
Right, oh, I agree, absolutely. Yeah, we can look into that just a little bit.
But we need to know.
If we've got to sign that card and do all that we had to do the transparency thing, it hides it from us now.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on the preliminary plan? And of course, going on page seven and eight, you go, there's several things that, well, these are the things here that would change the, if there was a revision to a preliminary plan right here, A through F, these are things that we could bring back to the planning commission for their review. Just kind of moving on, just kind of goes through the pre-application conference, basically what we're going to be looking for at the pre-application conference, that's pretty standard, I wouldn't say really any changes are there. More specifics on the preliminary plan itself, about the things that are going to be looked at on the preliminary plan, things we'll be expecting. Mr. Corbett and I were talking just a second ago, contour, this is Roman numeral 10 here, contours of vertical intervals, there would be contours on the preliminary plan, maybe not as detailed as you would see on the plat, on a construction drawing rather, but that there will be, there's an idea at least of a drainage concept for the property.
Can you go too far, Doug? I have a question on page nine, where it says, applicant shall provide an exhibit showing property configuration and acreage as well as aerial photography showing surrounding conditions. Are they going to be able to use GIS for that or are they going to have to go get aerial photography?
I think they could use GIS or Google Earth, anything like that. You know, we're not going to make them go out and do a fly of the property or anything.
Okay. And then, on the bullet point number two there under preliminary plan, it says, the preliminary plan shall include all phases of the entire development under consideration. So, so we're not going to see things on the plan labeled to be determined or future development, we're going to only see?
The preliminary plan will be the master plan for the development. Now, again, changes could be made as time goes on, so you may see a preliminary plan two or three times over time as things change. But what we're expecting the developers to do at this point is rather than just bringing a section at a time, that we want to see the overall plan of what they're proposing for the property.
Okay.
Okay. Again, this is just kind of going through the next few pages, it's just stuff that we'll see on the preliminary plan.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
One of your, under this 2A, items to be shown on the preliminary plan, one of the items is existing significant trees and tree masses. How do you define that? Is a rotten split hackberry tree a significant tree or is a bunch of privet hedge a significant tree mass or?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we actually spell that out exactly. I think kind of what we were thinking of when we look at that is especially if there's tree areas they want to conserve, you know, if there's some larger trees out there, you know, significant as far as the age, the condition, the size, that kind of thing. Or if there's tree masses, like, if there's an area that they'd like to conserve, those are things we'd like to see identified on the plan. I think that's kind of where we're going with that.
So, this is only for areas to be conserved, not necessarily every tree on the property?
Yeah, I don't think they need to see every tree. Yeah, if there's a little bush over here near where lot two is going to be, I don't think they need to go out there. It's not a, it's not asking for a landscape inventory of everything out there. It's more your larger trees and things that you want to conserve.
Kind of what I wanted to clarify because this could get kind of fuzzy.
Right, yeah, and I agree, but we're not, yeah, we're not trying to say that they're going to have to do an inventory of just everything out there. I'll make a note on that one. Okay. Any other questions on that before we move on? Okay, I'm not going to go in just a whole lot of the construction drawings, I'll, when we get, we're going to be getting to some engineering issues here before too long unless you just had a comment you wanted to make now, okay. The final plats, again, that's not going to really be a whole lot different than what you're currently seeing now as far as final plats are concerned. Now, I will say that from currently, let me just find that section here, you know, where we're just talking about expiration dates for final plats and those things, final plats will also, currently, final plats do not have expiration on them, but they will, I may have already passed that, but the final plats will have a 180-day lapse period, which is basically a six-month lapse period under our new regulations. And the big reason for that is primarily, we have some final plats that are sitting in the office and they really don't expire right now. They've been there, they've been approved for quite some time and chances are, they're not going to do anything, they're just there, but they're, they're out there. And what this regulation, 180 days, is, the reason we put that in there was that it'll encourage the developer and the engineer not to submit it until they know they're ready to do it. So, when we see a final plat, we'll have a pretty good assurance that something will happen, they'll be recorded, you know, before six months is over. So, that's really why we put that in there. Again, there's nothing in our regulations right now, but we thought six months would probably be enough time, you know, after approval, especially if they're to the point where they feel they're ready to start selling lots, that that should be ample time for them to get their approval, get their recording, pay any bonds and everything that are necessary and then move forward from there. So, that's why we put that, put that in there.
I have a question back up on page 15.
Okay.
3B, you've got the location of existing and proposed fire hydrants or a statement that all lots will be within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant.
Yes.
Does it need to say or sprinkler?
Well, and that's something that, that was one of the things I wanted to get some more conversation on. We're not, we'll get to that and if we need to change this, we can. I think I'm best about done with as far as the plat requirements. So, if you can just hold that for just a couple of minutes, then I think that'll be one of the first things we talk about. Okay, thanks. Anything else on final plats? Again, this is pretty much standard from what we currently see. We're not really proposing to change a whole lot as far as the process goes here. Okay, then after that, we just get into miscellaneous plating situations, condominium plats, consolation, consolidation plats, basically, and then just some verbiage on GIS submittal. I believe one of the engineers had some comments regarding which coordinate system we're using under our GIS and we're going to make that change in here as far as the year of the data and points that are being used. We've made a note of that. That's not reflected on your draft, but that's something that we can, we can handle pretty easily. Under minimum design standards, again, a lot of this you'll see that is similar to what is already in our regulations. You know, we have general requirements, these are different things. It says, in addition to the requirements established here in divisions of land, shall comply with all applicable laws and it kind of lists what some of those applicable laws and documents would be. Subdivision of street names, we spell this out a little more than we do in our current regulations as far as working with staff and the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District, which is E-911, regarding any new streets within a subdivision to be platted. Basically, we require them to submit a determination sheet that the road names are approved for use by 911. We always, we don't want to see duplicate road names or no road names that sound the same or similar to some existing road names that could possibly cause confusion for emergency services, so we want to avoid that. Conformity to street design alignment, again, that's fairly straightforward, nothing really different from what we do now.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
And maybe it's in the appendix, I didn't refer back to that, but anywhere in here do we talk about the streets needing to be at least 18 feet wide? Because we had added that before, that that was a minimum standard road.
Yeah, I think that's in, what is it? There's in the back, is there some?
Is that in the appendix?
Yeah, the profiles, the standard details, it is on, it is on that.
Okay. And then on that same page, under B, where it says, a subdivision of more than three lots off an existing or private road must be indicated. Does that go to the BZA?
Yeah, what, are you still on, what page are you on now?
I'm on that same page. You've got private streets.
Oh, yes, okay.
1, 2, 3, and then I'm under B.
Yeah, well, this is, yeah, and this, actually, I wanted to bring this up to you, to you all for some consideration. Currently, the way you handle private easements, and we don't see nearly as many of them as we used to, but the rules that we have in our subdivision currently is up to three lots can be handled. Well, one, basically, one lot off a 50-foot easement, as long as it's five acres, can be handled without any action from the planning commission or even the planning staff. If it's up to three lots, then it has to be a platted situation, even if it's a private road. Currently, the way that it's structured in our subdivision regulations, if it's four lots or greater, that has to come before you for a waiver to the number of lots on the easement as well as bringing the easement to a county road standard, even if it's a private road. What we're proposing here is basically, we would still do the up to three lots, often existing or new private easement, provided met the criteria, but if it was going to be anything greater than three lots, it would have to be approved as a PUD through the planning commission, it'd be like a zoning change.
Okay, so it stays here, it doesn't go to BZA?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what we're proposing. Now, that was something we wanted to bring to your attention for consideration because that is a change from the way we currently do it. It wouldn't be a waiver situation anymore. Basically, what we'd be saying, if somebody comes in and wants to do a new easement or anything, or wants to add more lots on an existing easement to put it over the three-lot threshold, then we'd be saying, okay, it's time for you to go to the planning commission and ask for a planned development with the private streets. But I bring that to you for your consideration.
And then at that point, would the road have to be brought up to county standards?
It would still have to be brought to county standard, yes ma'am.
1,600 feet, can they still come for a waiver?
Yes, sir.
Making somebody do a PUD compared to just getting a variance, if they're going to do full-blown engineering, just like a full-blown subdivision, is that pretty much going to price them out of the game?
I guess a lot of it depends on what they're wanting to do. I mean, the plating rules would still be in effect as far as what they're proposing. Now, I think there's some merit to what you're saying. Are there going to be additional cost to that? Then, yes, I think there would be. Of course, at the same time, I think we all can think of situations in here that, you know, developments off of private easements, especially when you start getting multiple lots on an easement, may not be the best use of the property and they do tend to be problematic. You know, we do run into issues with them a lot of the time, which is why we tried to go this route, still give them the three lots they could do, you know, without having to go through all that, but basically telling them, once you hit lot four, you know, it really needs to be, it's, it needs to be something different than just keep coming back to the planning commission, ask for new lots off of an easement.
Well, I remember when Mike Williams was our road superintendent, he really discouraged us from encouraging development on the private easements. I don't remember the specifics, but I remember how problematic it was for the road department for us to continue to allow developments on private easements, so that may be a good solution.
And, I mean, Rose Ridge was an example where originally, when they were, when they brought that in, when we sat down with the developer and his engineer, they were looking to do a private easement on the front end. Of course, we told them, well, this is what you're going to have to do to make that happen under our current regulations, plus you still have to build it to a county road specification. I said, at that point, why don't you just make it a county road? All these other issues go away if you do that and that's ultimately what they ended up doing. And, you know, and in a way, maybe, I think that's kind of what we're trying to encourage And now, you know, and in a way, maybe, I think that's kind of what we're trying to encourage here, in a sense. You know, if you're gonna go through all this trouble, just build it as a county road, and, you know, have the county take it over as a pri, as a public road, then, you know, all these issues, again, most of them go away at that point. But again, it's just something, if you wanna kind of ponder it a little bit, I mean, this is just a work session. Obviously, we're not taking any action for approval or anything. Even before that, we'd have to have a public hearing, and I'll talk about that in a, in a little while. But moving on, and lots, adequate building sites. Uh, each lot's intended to building improvement shall contain an area outside the limits of any existing easement, or building setback lines. Basically, you have to be able to build a lot where you can put a house on it, essentially is what that's saying. Of course, it doesn't apply to common open space lots with no structures. Uh, that, that's not a...
Doug, I have questions on that page.
Yes.
D and E, right above where you start lots. You've got, um, master deed or declaration of covenants shall also provide for sufficient level of funding to offset reasonable and foreseeable costs of maintaining the private easement. I need you to explain that. And then also, there shall also be no reserve strips controlling access. I need you to explain that. I wasn't clear on what those two things meant.
Uh, under D, and which sent, was it the last sentence?
The last sentence in D, and the first sentence in E.
Well, if there's a private street involved, of course, what we're saying here is that the covenants, the deeds, everything that's taken care of, needs to provide for the costs that are gonna be necessary to maintain the street, because obviously...
Identifying like ownership of who owns the street?
Well, not so much about who's gonna be responsible for maintaining it, yes. And the amount of funding that would be needed to maintain a street. What ends up happening on, and I know Mr. Corbett could probably speak to this better than I could, but what tends to happen with some private easements is, you know, after they've been established for a while, things start breaking down with the road. Well, a lot of the times, people think the county's responsible for taking care of that road, so they call us, saying, "Hey, when are you gonna come fix this road?" And we look it up and say, "Well, it's not a public road. We're not gonna do anything to it." Meanwhile, back at the subdivision, they haven't been putting aside the funds necessary to do proper maintenance of the road, and that really puts putting them in a bind.
So what we're looking for there, which is, well, uh, master deed or declaration of covenants, when it talks about how the road's gonna be paid for and maintained, you're not necessarily asking them to set up an escrow account and provide account numbers. You're just saying, "We wanna know what your plan is."
Yes, yeah. We, yeah, we're not, whatever they're gonna do is their business, but we just wanna know that there is a mechanism in place.
So that when it does fail, we've got somebody to go talk to?
Basically. Well, I mean, again, it'll be between, it won't really be a county's issue at that point. It'll be them, but at least they'll know who they can talk to about it.
And then what's a reserve strip?
A reserve strip would be something, as I would call a grudge strip, something like that. Somebody has a piece of, we don't see these very often at all. Actually, honestly, when I look at this, I thought we'd taken that out, but I guess we didn't. But, uh, basically, it's, if somebody has a small piece of property between a public right-of-way and the rest of a property, and says, "Well, you can't cross my property to get to the public road." As, as I've heard it called a grudge strip or something like that, that, that's really what that. But again, we very rarely, if ever, I can't even think of any instances where we have seen that, just off the top of my head.
We'll see one in two months.
Yeah, we'll see one in two months.
Uh, let's see. The next section, again, the, this, under lots, adequate building sites arrangement, that, that's pretty standard, even based on what we've currently have in our regulations. The next area that I really would, and Ms. Allen, this gets back to what you were referring to earlier, has to do with fire protection. Uh, you know, we've had some, uh, material, we've had some presentations from our fire chief, uh, kind of talking to us about fire hydrant requirements and those kind of things. And, uh, in our regulations currently, and basically what we've done is we've, we've kept our current regulations in here. We didn't really make any changes to it, with the exception of one, and I'll, I'll explain that in just a moment. But, uh, currently, our requirement is for fire hydrants to be within a thousand feet of all lots. Uh, you know, now, Mr. Farley, when he was here, asked us to possibly look at the, at the possibility of changing that maybe to 500 feet, as opposed to 1,000. Uh, I know that there are, uh, you know, there, there are pluses and minuses, both ways for that. You know, anything, I think I was quoting the paper, saying, "Anything I think we can do to improve fire protection area, I think we should do." However, I think it's a larger issue than just that, because I know C U D has some issues, and I think Jennifer, she's still...
Behind you.
She's still here?
She's behind you.
Okay. Uh, and she, I don't know if she came prepared to really discuss this, uh, today or not, but I know that there, uh, there may be some issues as far as supply, you know, pressure, those kind of things with that. Also, in our current regulations, you'll recall, a few years ago, we had a sprinkler subcommittee that made recommendations that basically, in any major subdivision, if it was gonna be outside of a thousand feet of a fire hydrant, and this wording right here at the top of page 23, well, I guess 23 on the, the document, so, uh, says that if the lines can't support a fire hydrant as determined by the water provider, uh, or the proposed development is not across proximity to a line that can support one, it's not feasible to extend it, then they can ask for a waiver from the Planning Commission, provided that as part of the waiver request, they would sprinkle the home, you know, as a means to just help improve fire protection in that area. The way it's currently written in our regulations, it's for all major subdivisions. We did tweak that to include all subdivisions, which would allow us to use this requirement as well on some of those larger lots or, that we do waivers for on easements sometimes. Uh, you know, that was, I, I think, a flaw in our current regulations, quite frankly, that, uh, you know, we would have large, you know, several, you know, acre lots, maybe on a private easement, that were not within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant, and would not be. Uh, just because even if the line out front was sufficient for a fire hydrant, the lot itself being so far back off the main road, was still gonna be outside of a thousand feet. But that would, this would allow us in those situations to say, "Okay, we're gonna let you do that, have a waiver to this requirement for the fire hydrant, but you are gonna sprinkle your home." Now, again, this would not apply to, um, this would not apply if it were the subdivision and the development, the lots were all within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant. I don't think anyone's really interested at this point of, uh, requiring sprinkler systems in all residential, single-family homes. I mean, that's not what the intent of this regulation was, and it still not.
And it doesn't apply to individuals, like individual development. This is subdivision development.
When you say individual development, you mean, anything that's not considered a subdivision? If it's like on a main, right?
Yeah, it says in here, residential development in a subdivision.
Right. And now, when we say a subdivision, now, understand, we're talking about the state definitions of a subdivision, which is anything under five acres. So if somebody comes in and wants to cut off two or three acres off of a larger track on a road, does this apply to them? Yes, it does. If it's somebody that's wanting to do something over five acres on an existing road, that does not qualify as a subdivision. They would not be...
Gotcha.
They would not qualify for that. So just understand, when we say subdivision, I'm not just talking a large development, you know, 20, 30 homes. Anything that's under five acres is considered a subdivision by state law. So just, just make sure we understand that.
So if guys, so if, uh, you have a farm, you wanna give the child two acres to build a home on?
Mm-hmm.
That applies to that.
That's a subdivision, yes, sir. And that's either under these regulations or even under our current. So that, that, that doesn't change.
And it goes back to the state right there.
Yes.
It's under five.
That's correct.
It's under five acres.
That's correct.
One thing that bothers me is it's within a thousand feet of the lot. And a lot on a farm out there could be on a hundred-acre track, and the house could be half a mile off the road. And you're still within the regulations if there's a fire hydrant within a thousand feet of the property line. But yet, you're, could be 4,000 feet from the house or from the structure.
And, you know, kind of...
That's a bit of a gray area or, or problematic area.
And along those same lines, uh, and we've had some discussions of staff among this, about this. We wanted to bring it to your attention as well. We run into situations sometimes where the, of course, the measurement is as the crow flies, you know, not necessarily as the truck drives. So you could have a lot that technically meets the regulation, but the fire hydrant's about two or three streets over this way, and how realistic is it to get a fire hose from there to the, to where the lot is, when you have to go over two or three fences? Uh, you know, there may be a creek in the way or something like that, you know, just, you know, trying to, just to use some examples. You know, and that's something that we've been struggling with too, is, you know, how do we, how do we make this so it's, it's more effective to do what its purpose is to do? You know, I mean, and I think what you bring up, Ms. Jordan, is, Jordan, is good point. Uh, and, and along with, with that, you know, even further, should we, that measurement be a different than just a thousand feet blanket, you know?
The other thing that I wrestle with is personal responsibility, because for people who come up here asking for a fire hydrant waiver, they know they don't have fire protection coverage. Okay? You know what I'm saying? It's like, at some point, there's a certain level of personal responsibility you have to factor in.
Right. And that's why I think we were looking at, that, that's why we changed this, instead of just major subdivisions, to all subdivisions, as far as the sprinkler requirements concerned. Uh, if you're gonna ask for a waiver, there needs to be something there, at least that, that helps them get out of the house, if nothing else. Um, now, something else that we've thought about doing, and we wanted, again, to bring this for your consideration, you know, there, there is some discussion about the 500 foot, you know, using that as a standard, as opposed to 1,000 feet for the fire hydrants. If that's something you would consider doing, would you also want to consider the possibility of relaxing that standard if the developer voluntarily wanted to put sprinkler systems in their homes? Like, if he brought, he brings in a subdivision, says, "Well, as part of my subdivision, I want to sprinkle all my homes." You know, we're not gonna make him do it, but if he wants to do that, then we could lessen that to 1,000 feet. Fire hydrant requirement, that's a thought.
Before Larry retired, he did a great presentation to us on, you know, the finite amount of water that we're allowed to access. And I just don't think 500 feet is a luxury we have.
Now, I see a lot of problems with the sprinkler issue, particularly in homes that are built in areas, uh, that are way off the road or whatever, already have problems getting water to the neighborhood. First of all, you probably already have low water pressure or insufficient volume there to run a sprinkler system and get that required 17 gallons per minute. The other thing is, um, uh, so a lot of these people are gonna be on wells, and then how are you gonna get that kind of water to the house then to run these sprinkler systems? Uh, you're gonna have to put in a, build a holding tank under the house, and you're gonna have to have a pump system. If there's power failures, of course, none of it works. Then this power, this pump never comes on until the sprinkler's activated, and that could be never. It could be 10, 20 years. Well, as you guys know, if you've got a pump that sits for 10 or 20 years and is never operated, don't count on it working when it needs to be, when it needs to work. As far as the personal responsibility, I think people have to recognize, if you build a house in a rural area that doesn't have fire protection, I mean, that's, they're kind of, they're kind of aware of that, and that's the reason we have, we have insurance on our homes. I mean, we pay a pretty good price for that. I know the sprinkler industry, these guys, the lobbyists are gonna say, "Well, you're gonna get a discount on your insurance to pay for the sprinkler system." Well, that's just simply not so, if you look at the numbers, uh, that the insurance companies are actually providing. Some of those discounts are only 2%. You're talking about, you know, i- if your total insurance bill for, for a year is 1,000 bucks, and you're gonna save 2%, well, that's not gonna do you a whole lot of good to pay for a $5,000 or $6,000 sprinkler system. I, you know, those numbers don't work, but, um, yeah, I can see a lot of reasons why you're gonna price a lot of people out of the market, particularly in these cases where you cut off a couple of acres for your child. I hate to see, I just hate to see us put such a requirement on these houses out here in the area that's gonna just be so expensive and put people out of the market and force them to do other things. It, it concerns me. There's just so many issues, when you've got smoke detectors that work so well for getting people out of the house, particularly when, you know, they've got some of the Meister smoke detectors. We'd be better off requiring, you know, good smoke detectors or centrally wired systems and notify the fire department when you're not home or whatever. But sprinkler systems, I just see too many holes in that, uh, for, as far as cost and, and damage and not working, you know, unreliability. I, you know, I just hate to see us keep requiring more and more things on people that are gonna be of very little value to them.
And now, just a couple of other things I will point out. Uh, again, what you're seeing here, with the exception of in all subdivisions, is pretty much verbatim. You know, the way it's currently written in our code, it's major subdivisions. And I will say that also, if there are existing residential structures in a proposed subdivision that comes through, those don't have to, they don't have to retrofit, uh, you know, just, just so you understand. But I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Farley.
I, I just don't feel like, you know, on these one-lot minor or partitions, that they should have to go through, through all this. They're coming to us for waivers. We even saw, you know, I noticed one of the meetings last year, even a fireman came to us. I mean, the firemen don't even want these sprinkler systems. Why are we forcing them on everybody else? You know, if somebody's got a minor subdivision or a partition, you know, they shouldn't have to go through the same thing as a subdivision that has 200 homes in it. You know, the fact of the matter is, we should have water for, for, to these neighborhoods to support a subdivision. That's, that's what it comes down to. We need the fire hydrants. Why are we, why would we allow a subdivision that doesn't have proper fire protection?
Any other comments on, on this? Any direction you wanna give the staff as far as how we wanna move forward? Again, what we're seeing here, again, except for that small change I said, is pretty much what's in our code currently.
But we are starting, what you're saying is though we're starting to require, I mean, it's in there, but we've been granting waivers all along for an individual to come in.
Well, we've been granting, right, the, the way it's in our current code, it's only for major subdivisions that they have to put the sprinklers in, which means if it's four lots or greater, it's doesn't, this does not apply to those situations like the one lot. Somebody wants to carve off two or three acres off their farm and give it to their son, daughter, or grandson, whatever.
They don't have to have sprinklers.
They don't, that, that does, this does not apply to that situation currently.
Do they have to come in and have waivers?
They still have to come in and have a waiver, right. They still have to ask for a waiver, but the waiver does not require the sprinkler system requirement to be, to be brought into effect at that point.
So if it's, I, I don't understand, if, if it's not in here, why, why do they have to ask for a waiver?
They still have to be within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant. I mean, that part doesn't change.
Or they have to have a sprinkler system.
Only in major subdivisions.
In major subdivisions.
Right. And, and for anything currently, for anything less than four lots, if they're not within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant and they wanna develop a lot, they have to come in and ask for a waiver to that, but it stops at that point. They don't have to ask, there, there's not the sprinkler requirement at that point, but they still have to be within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant. So they ask for the waiver to that provision, and if they get it, then they go on their way from that point.
Are the waiver requests gonna continue to come to us, or they're gonna go to B Z A?
Yes, no, they'll still continue from here.
Most of the waivers we grant are, they don't have sufficient pressure or line size or volume or something.
If they can't support?
Right, if, yeah.
See, you do, you know, that's, I'd say 90% of what we grant.
Yeah, and I would, I'd say you're right.
If it's for a fire hydrant.
Right. I would say you're absolutely correct. We don't, uh, I mean, basically, what I've told people is, "Well, I don't wanna spend 2,000, 3,000, whatever it is, to put a fire hydrant in." I say, "If that line can support a fire hydrant, they're not gonna grant you the waiver." I'm like, I wouldn't even bother asking at that point. I mean, if it can support it, you need to put it in, and that's, that's basically what we tell developers when we talk with them, or anybody who comes in.
Doug, on this 1,000 feet, uh, you talked about they might go across the property lines. If you just insert the word "road" on 1,000 road feet, wouldn't that solve that?
I guess it depends on what you define as road feet. We can, let's play, we can play with that language a little bit and see what... I'd like to kind of take a look at maybe what some other areas use for their measurement requirements. I don't know if, I, I understand what you're trying to get at, and, and I'm not saying I disagree with it. I just don't know if, I wanna be able to make sure that what we put in there is clear to somebody who looks at it and says, "Oh, it has to be within 1,000 feet, road feet, whatever that means." We just wanna make sure we define it accurately, is all.
And on, on the big discussion we're having now about the sprinkled versus non-sprinkled, and the fire hydrants and all that, we have an open public hearing on this, right?
We will, yes, sir, we will.
Okay, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Farley will be there. I'm sure the Home Builders Association will be there. I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of information to help, try to help us make decisions that we probably don't have today.
And that's, that's possible, yes, sir.
I hope they're gonna be there.
Do we still have that? Do we have that sheet? I just, now, it just hit me. Um, can you, yeah, good, can we go ahead and do that? Thanks. Uh, Mr. Farley actually had, uh, provided me something that we'll go ahead and pass out. Uh, just hit me sitting here, that, uh, we didn't discuss this until now, so I hadn't passed it out, but...
C U D, have any comments?
I'm not sure if we...
I'll be right back.
Yeah.
On this issue?
Talk about on the spot. I'm Jennifer Wood from C U D. Um, there's a lot of different ways I can approach the fire hydrant issue. I'm not exactly sure if you have any specific questions that you want me to address, 'cause I can kind of start at it from different avenues. So I'll first ask the question. Do you have any specific questions for me to address, or...
It's what we've talked about here, as far as your comments from C U D and what...
Sure.
Based on what we've been doing to what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll speak to that first. Um, as Doug was sort of talking about previously, the process that we've gone through before is whatever comes across the desk for county planning, um, I get emailed to me by either Elizabeth or Doug, and, um, they will ask, um, and this is what we have on the agenda, "Do you have any water lines in the area and fire hydrants in the area? And if it won't support a hydrant, uh, or will it support a hydrant, basically, if, if you have a water line there and there is not a fire hydrant located within 1,000 feet?" So I go through, um, hydraulic calculations to determine if there is not a hydrant within 1,000 feet, can the line support a hydrant, um, uh, and then I pass that information along. So that's sort of the process that we go through whenever something, um, comes across the county's desk that needs a fire hydrant. And they'll take that step and move into, if there, if there is a water line and it cannot support a hydrant, then they'll go into the, the waiver process. Uh, and just to speak about, uh, a little bit of...
And y'all look at right-of-way feet or road feet or something like that, what?
I'm looking at it how the county looks at it as far as with, as the crow flies within 1,000 feet.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Is that how you guys look at it, correct?
It is.
Okay. So that's, that's how I'm looking at it, 'cause that's how they look at it as far as within 1,000 feet as the crow flies. And, I mean, I can do it differently, but that's how the county's been doing it.
I just know some neighborhoods, you know, in the past years have, have wanted to team up and get together, whether it's their homeowner association or whatever, and get water hydrants, fire hydrants. And so, you know, you have the volunteer fire departments or whatever to come in, maybe give a little speech or a little talk or something about it, and it's like, "Well, you got fences and you've got, um, whatever and whatever and whatever, you know, on people's property, so, you know, we have to go by, like you were talking about, road feet, uh, or county road, county right-of-way, whatever you wanna say, um, that way, instead of as the crow flies because of backyard fences, whatever, whatever, whatever."
Yes, sir. I'll do it however. Uh, that's, I've just been sort of following that standard, 'cause that's what the county does.
But they can't pull hose across the fence and, and fight a fire, so they have to go by the right-of-way.
But I can do it however, however you want me to do it.
I got you.
That's what I'm saying. And just to give a little background on sort of what goes into determining whether a line can support a hydrant or not, without getting too, um, it, too much in the detail is, um, with C U D, we have a very large area, unlike, uh, a city or municipality, meaning that we have lots of different elevations that we have to serve. So we don't have just one big area, like, say, the city of Murfreesboro, um, which is on one pressure zone. We've got 13 different pressure zones, which are all fed by a different pump, and some of those pressure zones don't have tanks. So the likelihood of having the volume available for fire protection is just not so. Um, and those, um, areas were, um, determined based on the demand and based on elevation. So the line that's put into that area was determined on domestic demand. So the line that's put into that area was determined on domestic demand. In certain areas where we've upgraded, sort of starting with your higher density areas and working out, as we upgrade, we think about fire protection and if we can supply that. And sort of one of the things that becomes a little bit muddied whenever you start talking about fire protection is the fact that we'd love to put in fire protection everywhere. The problem comes in that we have state regulations that we have to abide by as well. So we're talking about if you have a, if you have a fire hydrant in the area where you have low volume available, so smaller sized line and maybe a smaller tank or no tank at all, and you turn on a hydrant, we have to maintain 20 PSI in the system. We, so we have to maintain 20 PSI at the meter for each and every customer. And that's a state regulation that we have to abide by. So that's something that I take into account when I'm running a hydraulic analysis for a potential area that's gonna improve or anything that comes across the desk of Elizabeth or Doug. That's what I take into account whenever I'm looking at that, is our existing customers. 'Cause I don't, we don't want to affect the customers that we already have by putting something in that's gonna, say, drop their pressure or, or create a problem for them. So I'm just sort of letting you know that's sort of what goes on whenever I'm looking at an area to put in a hydrant where maybe there isn't one already. And also, we have to make, we have to abide by state regulations for, for water quality as well. So that's something that we have to take into account. If we were to upsize this line to provide fire protection, what is that gonna look like for water quality as time goes on? So as you can imagine, if you had 10 customers and a 20-inch line, all right, you may not have enough demand on that line to turn that line over, which means that we have to flush the line to keep it fresh so that we can abide by the standards that we have to abide by for the state for water quality. And so when we talk about, I think Ms. Allen spoke to the point of limited supply, we hear all the time, and especially last summer, whenever we are going through the drought, of limited supply. So that's some, all these sort of things go into one big ball as far as determining how we operate best as a utility district. So we have to think about all these things and all the regulations that we have to abide by as well, whenever we talk about fire protection. So it becomes a very complex issue other than just saying, oh, we're gonna have a 500-foot or a 1,000-foot requirement. We have to think about all these things and how we operate and how that affects the customer. Last summer, we didn't have a whole lot of water to flush with. So keeping that in mind in areas where we're putting in fire protection or upsizing the line to provide fire protection, it's just, it becomes an issue to, to, to flush the line and keep it fresh for water quality purposes. And in a, very good example, actually, inside a major area is over there in the avenues. All of that line in there is upsized just for fire protection, but a lot of those stores in that area only have a sink and a bathroom. So we do a lot of flushing over there just to keep the lines fresh, which sort of mimics the outlying rural areas where we have very few customers per mile. So upgrading those lines would create an issue as far as water quality, which creates an issue with limited water supply. So that kinda gives a brief synopsis of all the things that go into determining the areas where maybe we don't have fire protection. Okay, can we provide fire protection there? We'd love to, but we have to think about all these things as well and think about how the quality of water that we're serving the people to drink with. And that's one of, those are all the things that we have to think about whenever we think about providing fire protection in areas where we don't have it already.
When you flush those lines, is that water just wasted or do you try to capture it and use it in a tanker or?
We haven't, but it's been discussed on what we can do with that. As water sort of becomes more and more limited, that might be something, I haven't heard of anybody in the state doing that, but it's by no means not something that we, we have looked at it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We've talked about it. As we get into more limited water supply and like the drought we had last year, we're starting to think about all kinds of things on how we do things differently, on flushing more efficiently, using less water. How can we keep, keep maintaining our, our quality of water and operate a little differently and more efficiently and effectively? So those are all kinds of things that we continue to talk about.
Basically what you're saying, there are areas in the county where you've got a four-inch line and the demand, the customer base is small enough, you actually wouldn't wanna put in a larger line because it would affect water quality.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I'm saying. And there are areas where you might have a six-inch line, which by the state requirements, you have to have at least a six-inch line to put a fire hydrant on it. But you could have thousands and thousands of feet of six-inch line to get to that one point, which means that you have a lot, no matter if you're starting with higher pressure, if it's a high-pressure area, your problem is volume availability. So it's going through this really small diameter pipe to get to that point, and you're losing a lot of head loss to get to that point, which comes into play the 20 PSI that we have to maintain at each meter. So you start turning on a hydrant that's, you know, got a two and a quarter inch nozzle and a six-inch hole, basically feeding it wide open, you're likely to drop pressure on your higher elevations, and that's our limiting factor. Hope I did an okay job describing that process. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer whatever else you've got. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
From my standpoint, that was pretty much the last thing I had to discuss. I was gonna turn it over to Mr. Corbett here to talk about a few other issues in the regulations, dealing more with, on the engineering side. So I guess we'll just kinda let you take over from here, Doug.
Yeah, let me get over here. Well, in the, looking at the subdivision regulations, most, a lot of the stuff has, has stayed the same. Of course, we, we've changed some of the stuff, trying to figure out, 'cause of the time, what we should probably look at first. I'll tell you why. I think what we'll try to do first is get into the, and this is not in order, it's in here. I'm, I'm trying to do it because we may run out some time. I have to do some of this a little bit later. I think I'll get into the bond situation to start with. When the economic turndown started around 2008, we ran into some challenges with our subdivisions, and we had, we've had a few of our developers, or quite a few of them, kinda go out of business, go bankrupt or whatever. And so we were left with pulling some bonds, which we've been able to do in some of, some of the, the cases, we were unable to, to get to the bond by the individual went bankrupt, the bank took over and actually sold some lots before we were aware of what was going on. That's another story. But so, we looked at what we could do to put in here to perhaps handle that type of situation. And we've visited with Mr. Brooks, our new highway superintendent, several times, had some work sessions with him on how he'd like to see the roads handled as far as this, because at the end of the day, once our subdivisions are built, then we go to the road board and ask them to, to accept the roads in. And the bonds are figuring greatly here. So currently, the subdivision developer comes in, and after everything's approved, we calculate a bond based on our spreadsheet we have, the costs we put in there, or costs that we've worked with the highway department to put in there as far as developing this. They're approved for 14 months, and then at 12 months, we get them renewed. And for each time they can come in and renew them, as long as the bank will take over. What we're proposing now is a little different. Let's see if I can find the section that that bond, do you remember where it is? I guess it's on page 31. What we're looking at is a performance surety, this basically can be in the form of a, a, a bond or letter of credit, some type of surety to cover this. We've visited with the city, Murfreesboro, spent several hours over there and some of the others. What we're proposing, that the performance surety will equal amount, equal 110% of the cost installation required improvements. Currently, it's 100%. Proposed amount shall be calculated, and we, we'll again do our spreadsheet and try to coordinate those costs with the highway department, the cost being cost of asphalt, rock, and that type of stuff. And what we're looking at now is that bond, of course, has to be issued by a company here in the, so that we can pull it in the state of Tennessee. We, we've had a little challenge with that. We have a bond on an existing subdivision that went out of business a couple of years ago, and we spent two years now trying to pull the, the bond. The letter credits are a little different. Usually you just take your papers down to the bank and they give you a check, you know. And so the, the bonds, even though it's on a company that's in Franklin, the bonding company itself is in, I believe, in Ohio. So we've had several conversations with them. There are people that have been down here, look at the projects and stuff on pulling the bonds. And, and then talking to the city of Murfreesboro, that's somewhat similar to most of the bond situation. So we discussed, do we eliminate bonds or only go a letter credit or whatever? But we left, we feel like we should leave that in there to give the developers an alternative. It's just that it's a little bit more difficult to do it that way.
Dale, one, excuse me, one of the requirements on a surety bond, it calls for it to be non-expiring. Is that standard and is it even possible to-
That's standard language, and we've got it in our bonds at this time.
Does that mean it's forever when it says non-expiring? I mean, aren't they for a limited amount of time?
The, the way, the language is, it's not expiring, but the bank has to notify us, or the bond company has to notify us, 90 days. We actually haven't put an expiration date on when the document they send us for a year. And the bank, or we, the county, has the option of calling that, but we have to notify in writing 90 days at a time. Otherwise, it's automatically renewed. The letter credits and bonds that we issued in the past, we didn't have the non-expiring language in some of those. And where we ran into a problem is where an individual left town or went bankrupt or whatever, before we started to try to call it, we, we were unable to get the money. And so this is a, a standard language that's in the industry of the other people.
Is this something that's fairly new, standard language, or is it something-
Well, it's new for us. In the county, we've been doing it for about a couple of years. Once we started having problems with these, any new ones, we had them put it in there. But in talking to other communities, it's, it's somewhat standard in the business.
I, I guess the question that comes to my mind is if you go to a bonding company and say, I want a bond that doesn't expire, is it even, how much is that gonna cost?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's kind of a cost of business. Most of the ones that have the large bonds will have an umbrella bond for the whole corporation, of which the development may be just a small portion of it. So their umbrella bond may be for 10 million, 20 million, whatever it is, of which they will issue an addendum saying that $200,000 for this developer is covered under this bond, a huge bond. So I don't know, I don't know the cost of the bond or letter credit. I haven't checked into that. Again, this is draft language, and we're doing it to try to protect the county in case we go into another one of these, these downturns, economic situations we've, we've just been through.
Can we talk about bullets three and four? It says, "A surety bond or letter of credit option shall not be available to an owner or developer without planning commission approval whose past performance has resulted in breach or expired bonds within two years of time of breach." And then sort of similar language, "An insurance company whose past performance has resulted in non-payment of a bond may be excluded from providing a surety bond for an owner or developer for a period of five years from the date of breach." Is that the same kind of thing you were just talking about that when-
No, this, this is a new thing. What we, in the past, if we have developer X who's brought in a subdivision, and he has had history of either not completing his work, doing bad work or whatever, we were told we weren't able to bring that as part of the presentation. Our presentation, we want to bring to you now, and we put it in here, is the fact that we, this developer X, we've had some problems on this subdivision based on this type of things, and we're not sure that they're willing to follow through on what they've got here. That's just to provide you with information. The insurance companies, an example, again, the bond I've been trying to pull for a couple of years, and I think if, if the company came back and, you know, we have a bond with X, I might tell you that, you know, it's taken five years to pull this bond. You know, is that, again, this is a draft thing. It's something I, we put in here to try to provide you with the information so that when something's brought before you, you, or county-
I like it. I just wanna be able to act on the information. If I know that they've had failed developments in the past, I wanna be able to act on that knowledge, because I could very easily hear them say that development has nothing to do with this development.
Exactly. And they've told us that before, and that's the reason we put it in here. Realize this hasn't gone for the lawyers. After we do our draft and changes and stuff, we'll send it over to Mr. Cope's office to look through it before we do our public hearing and stuff. But what we want, what we, when we started putting this together, it said, all right, let's put everything, this draft in here, everything we think you should be able to consider when you're making a decision on this. And then it will give us some, once it's approved and becomes part of regulations, it gives us some sort of say, Mr. Developer, we don't want you doing this project now. This doesn't say that they're on a blacklist for three years or whatever. All it says is, we wanna be able to tell you and let you make that decision. And it may not, it may not pass the test when we go through Mr. Cope's office.
And then the other question that I had, that again, this is probably more of a policy question for you, Dale. Can you describe for me what our internal procedure is for making sure that all bonds and loans of credit are valid and enforceable? 'Cause I know we've had a situation before where something fell through the cracks and we had one that wasn't. So what, what is your internal policy to make sure that all bonds and loans of credit are valid and enforceable?
We had a spreadsheet set up for these before the, the economic downturn started. But I didn't have any ticklers put into my system, so it, it became an alarm. And I had an individual following again the office. And because of some workload and stuff, a couple of them fell through, and it comes back to me. So, but anyway, since then, so what we've done is we've changed the database. They're all listed, expiration dates, whatever. They're set up so the ticklers, a ticker is just a notification that a bond issued is due in 90 days. It comes in 90 days, 60 days, and 30 days. And it goes to myself, it goes to Todd, and it goes to Bob Reed. So if we're on vacation or out of sick water-
Multiple places. Okay.
It goes three different places. And, and we get in touch with the developer and the bank at that point in time and said, are you gonna continue this? If so, we need this information in. We usually give them a week to 10 work, business days before it expires. That allows us to put together the paperwork to call the bond. We've, we've called it both on a developer. We've had a, a bank who took over a subdivision, kept it for a year, and then told us, you called the bond 'cause we don't wanna carry it anymore. And some other, there's some other situations that come up. Again, I keep saying bond, but this is a surety. Some of them are letter credits, some of them are bonds. Some of the, one of the challenges the developers are having right now is the banks are, as you know, are a little tighter with their money. And so they're not issuing these letter credits or bonds as easily as they were before. Again, that's a business decision that they'll have to make. But we are starting to accept cash. We've had them bring it in. We had a developer, his bond was $28,000. He went to the bank, and the bank said, well, you give us a check for $28,000, we'll put it into account, we'll give you a letter credit to cover that $28,000. So he called us and said, what if I bring you the money? 'Cause it would've cost him, in addition to the $28,000 he had to put up, he had to also pay for the letter credit. So he brought us a check of $28,000. We take it over and give it to Lisa. She puts it in an account over there. He does the work. In this case, he did the work. It was completed. He requested his money back. We go get the money and give him back to him. It works better for us to get the cash course, 'cause then if you, if you need it, sorry, they're on site, you go out and do the work. Another thing we're gonna do on the, on the bonds is, once, once, when they come up for renewal, we're going to recalculate the bond. we're going to recalculate the bond. What we've done in the past is our spreadsheet, right now it says $125 per lineal foot to do a road. And, uh, that, that's if you had to do the whole road. So what we're going to do is we're going to recalculate that based on calling the highway department or doing the bituminus index. So that may vary, it may go up or may go down a little bit. That way, because of the fluctuations and the cost of asphalt and stuff, we won't get caught in, in, um, some of the ones, some of the ones we've had to pull when they were established were at $55 a lineal foot. And they were not upgraded. And so when we pulled them, we end up short on money because asphalt has gone up so much. And right now it's fluctuating quite a bit. The $125 we have now currently will cover the cost. But, uh, we just bid out one. The bituminus index went up $12 a ton within 30 days, which when you, when you're topping a road, that changes the cost of your project quite a bit. So we're going to do that in addition to some of these, um, what we haven't done before. Now, um, Mr., uh, you're talking to Mr. and Mr. Brooks on, on the road situation. We've got the roads out there. You got your rock base down, your binder and everything sits there. And it may sit there, some of them sitting out there now five, six, seven years. And it's raining, freezing and thawing, going down through our, you know, our base. Some case destroying it, so they had to be redone and whatever. So what we're going to propose is a little different. We've kind of tossed this at the city and some of the engineers and they think it's going to be a challenge. But what we want to do is we want them to put down the final coat either after 75% of the homes have been completed or after one year, the binder's been in place. Now, the reason we're doing this is to protect the integrity and the, and the base of the road. This is quite a, this is a pretty radical change. And, uh, so there probably will be quite a few comments on this. But we, and Mr. Brooks is here if you have any question for, but I totally agree. It's basically, we're doing it to protect our infrastructure. There's a challenge here because after you, uh, put the final coat down, we're also going to ask them for a year's maintenance bond. Now, we had maintenance bonds when I first got here. We did away with them because things were turning over so fast. You know, really it was, it didn't come into play. But now, if you got a 60 lot subdivision, which we think you'll see less and less of those because of the way the bank's lending money, then, uh, you may see 10 this year, 20 next year. It'd be quite a while before you get to the, the 75% level that we're asking for the homes to be completed.
I'm sorry Dale, would they maintain a construction entrance then? Because I'm thinking once you've got your final level down, you're not going to want construction traffic on that.
Uh, it's going to, we work with them on where the construction entrance is. It does, sometimes it is on the final road and sometimes it's not. Realizing that, that year that you've got all the construction traffic going over the road, you take a chance in tearing up the road. And it's before then the county would accept it, even at the year they'd have to repair all those roads. And so that, that gets into the decision. There's quite a bit. One reason we haven't put them on the final coat in the past is exactly that reason because of the wear and tear. But we're feeling that maybe the damage that's done from the water infiltrating our basin through our, is, is greater than the construction traffic damage would be to the road. And again, some of the, some of the subdivisions are set up so you can have the construction entrance different than that main road and it wouldn't be a problem. But a lot of them where they're just a straight road in and then they're spread out, uh, that becomes a challenge.
This will apply to final plats that we see only after this, if it is adopted, is adopted. It won't be retroactive or anything.
That's correct. That's correct. I want to make sure I got everything here. Okay.
While you're, while you're looking Dale, I, I will say, as somebody who's lived in multiple subdivisions, it's aggravating to be in a, a developing subdivision where they don't have a final top. And you may, you know, you may be living there a year and riding to your front door without that top coat on it. It just gets aggravating after a while. And you're right, free stall and water, that water percolates down through that. And it, it, it's a problem for everybody at that point. So I, I, I would support this thought.
Another thing we're going to start, we've had in our regulations before asbills of these subdivisions, but we have not enforced that. Part is the fact to do software and some other things. So the stormwater ordinance now requires us, the state law, to have these asbills done. And so we're going to go back. We have that in our, uh, we're putting it in regs. Uh, we've got in our budget, an update to our software to handle these. In the past, we didn't call them because if they'd given them to us, our software was somewhat outdated and would not have been able to handle them anyway. And the software package is quite expensive. And, uh, so we'll see, we'll see how they, even if we don't get it, we're still going to have to require these asbills because it's part of the, the stormwater, um, requirements. And then after the final coat is submitted, uh, on the final plat, the engineer record has to submit a stamped certificate of pollution to our office. And what this states is the subdivision was built as designed and operates. In other words, um, if they've got a, a, let's say a detention pond in the back and the drawings call for a pipe to be at X elevation, it turns out it's put in five feet too high or something, there's a good chance that that's not going to work like it was designed. So this is a certification by engineer, whoever designed that, that says it is in, it's as I designed and it, and it will work. Uh, we've run into a, a little problem with that, so we, we're, we're putting that in there. We can, um, reduce the bond by 50%, up to 50%. And what this does is encourage, um, the people to go ahead and do all the work before they bring in the final bond, the final plat. Because of the cost of doing it. They've got to put it in anyway. And so by doing that, then we can reduce their bond down to 50%. We won't go any less than that, again, because of the unknown fact of the cost of, of doing business, you know, asphalt and that type of stuff. Some of the other items are just procedural items, like, you know, when we do the inspections, uh,
Dale, back on the roadway, I was just going to ask Mr. Brooks, since he was here, if it was anything he needed to add or, or felt uncomfortable with, you know, as while we're dealing with this, uh, now is the time.
The topics that we've covered so far, I'm comfortable with.
We, uh, we did add some to the cross-section of the roads. And let's see, what? Okay. Most of the stuff we left in, uh, we, we looked at cross-sections from different areas. We've added, uh, one thing is we want to go from a base of six inches of rock to eight inches of rock. And there's a couple of reasons that, of course, we feel it gives us a better road. It's in doing the actual construction, um, it's just somewhat difficult to get that six inches and, and to, and to make sure inspected properly. Talking to some of the other engineers in the areas, that's not unusual. Most of the, a lot of the areas do, do the eight inches, some of them do it 10 inches. But, uh, there is concern and talking to engineers here, that that could be a, a challenge for the developers. But, uh, again, we're, we're trying to, uh, put these roads in a better shape so that when we get them, the county has less maintenance to do on them in a shorter period of time. So that, that one will be, uh, need to probably come up.
When you say travel lanes, that's pavement width?
Uh, where are we?
On that, on that chart.
Table A.
Oh, okay.
So when it says travel lanes, that means pavement width?
That's, that's the, that's the, of the lane that you're traveling in.
But that's pavement. That's not just shoulder to.
That's correct. That's correct. Example there, collector at the bottom, two lanes would be two lanes of 11 feet, or a local two, 11-foot lane.
And I think that gets back to the sound what you were talking about earlier, the minimum of 18 feet. That would, right there, that's the minimum, basically 22, based on what new roads.
Well, that was what, just before that, in, um, under B functional street classifications, I'd put a note beside private streets that had 18 feet, question mark. Cause I wasn't sure if that needed to be listed there or not.
See, the thing, if it's a private street, we don't, we don't, we don't have any authority because basically we recommend to them, uh, like we get them, try to get them work with on drainage or pipes, but I don't have any authority to force them to do something. So that's, that's.
I was just curious if we left something out, but you're saying we didn't?
We didn't because, again, it's similar to what Doug said earlier. I, I could put in that to be a minimum of 18 feet, but they're private. I, I don't have any way to go in and enforce it. And what I do tell them, I, the office tells them is, if you want to develop this as a private and you think someday you might want the county to take it over, we recommend you build it to county inspects. We will inspect it so that it's on record. Otherwise, if, even if you tell me you build it county inspects, I'm not going to, I'm going to require you to go out and do some borings. And you've got to prove to me that, you know, rock tickets and these things, that you actually did it. Whereas if you, uh, you know, we've had a couple of communities come in and want to do a gated community, which makes those private streets because you can't put a gate across a, a, a public highway in Tennessee. And they went ahead and built them and they said, we're going to build these to county specs. I had Bob go by and look at them and do the regular inspections on there. In that case, if they want to come back later, we've got it on record. They've got it. Otherwise, the private street, they can, we can say, we recommend, you know, 11 feet or 10 feet, but they may make them six feet or whatever. I just don't have any authority to enforce that.
And I had a note back on, um, it was bullet point under, it was bullet point D that said, "Reduction, extension or release of performance surety." And number two, you've got, um, it basically says that you're going to allow for two six-month extensions. And so I'm, I'm just curious, so after those two-month extensions?
Well, at that point, they come back to you. And we put that extension there because of weather.
Okay.
Let's say that they had to complete it in December or January. Well, the plants are not open or the weather's not going to be conducive to that. We figured up to a maximum of six months. It's anywhere six months to get us up into the summertime or when the plants are open and stuff. That's basically what that was for. If they come back and say, well, I'm not able to do it because of the schedule or whatever, after, up to six months, uh, I would bring it back to you guys.
So this is not the same as when they say, because of the economic downturn, I need an extension?
This has to do with actual timing of do the work. You don't really want them to try to pave, well, again, asphalt plants building, but it, but still you don't want to do it when the weather's real bad or whatever. You, you're trying to look at the quality of stuff that you're putting down at the time.
Dale, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is your six inches to eight inch rock base suggestion, are those minimums? I mean, does, I don't remember how it reads currently. Is it, is it six inch minimum to an eight inch minimum? Because what if you have poor soils or low E prime and you actually need thicker base?
Let me, I can't remember if we've made, said that as a min, we made it eight inches, but I don't know if we did it.
Cause sometimes eight inches may not be enough.
Minimum, okay. That's minimum.
And so it currently reads six inch minimum?
Right. Right. And it, it goes back to our discussion on what you're talking about. And so that's, hopefully that's where they would either talk to us or to the highway department. But it's, it's to their advantage if there's a problem to make sure they got enough rock. Otherwise it fails when we go out and do our tests and they have to dig it up and redo it. I mean, these things that we're, we're putting in here are things that we want, but it's also to the, to the advantage of the developer. Even though it's going to cost them a little more money upfront, he has a better quality, he has a better product, it doesn't fail. And, cause it's kind of like.
Well, it saves on his maintenance costs down the road.
Saves on maintenance costs. And then it's kind of like ditches, you know, we encourage them to make sure they keep their ditches graded and stuff. Some of them will let them erode and whatever. So when we go out and inspect it before we'll take it over, they have to recut all those ditches. So it's, it's, uh, to their advantage to maintain, to do some of this maintenance stuff as they go along. In other words, you have to re, or, or if they don't properly put their road together and we go out and do their, our test and it fails, then they, you know, they've got some additional costs there that they have to take care of. We, uh, we put in here the minimum grade for a local street and a curb, on a curb and gutter section at, at half percent. And for a roadside ditch at 1%. That's a little different. I think the, the max, the minimum now is 5%, I mean, 0.5%. We, but again, the challenge comes in cutting, actual cutting the ditches and stuff. And so we increased that to 1%. If you had a, if you had a completely flat piece of property and it was, you know, three miles long and you had to cut it 1%, you'd have a real deep ditch at the end of it. But we don't usually have that, that a distance. We're basically trying to help ourselves in getting the water out. Some of the ditches that we have that are, where they're supposed to be a half percent, uh, or anything below that, they're supposed to put concrete in them. Or if they do, it still makes it very challenging sometimes to get the water out of the subdivision because it's so flat. And so we just in, increase that. And we put a maximum grade on a local street, 12%. There are some parts of the county that are out in the edges that if you wanted to put a subdivision out there, they'd be pretty steep. And so we find, figure out some way to get around that 12%. When you get that steep, it's, it's difficult to put in your infrastructure. It's difficult to maintain. It's difficult for people to get to their houses. You know, that kind of stuff, especially in the wintertime.
Is that a change from the past?
Uh, I'm thinking the past, we, I'm not sure we had our maximum. We just put it in there. It's, uh, something we, we found in a couple of other places. Now, in my other jobs, I've worked over in Cherokee, North Carolina, where we put some houses that were much steeper than this or up west. So there were ways to do it, but it just, I don't, I'm not sure you want to put a subdivision on, I think a 12%. We've had a problem with sidewalks. I think that's most of the major changes we did in, in the actual roads themselves. We had some problems with some sidewalks. Um, the, the county does not do maintenance on sidewalks. So the question is, a lot of these PUDs come in with sidewalks. No one that county doesn't do, but they want to put them either right back behind your curb and gutter or within the right of way. So how do you handle that legally? And we talked to Josh and, uh, over in Jim Cope's office. So we're, we're, we put a statement in here that sidewalks, J3, let me see. Sidewalks are not required in any development. However, um, some of the lot owners or some of the homeowner association, uh, require them to put it in. This is out in, uh, one, we got down south here. Yeah, Rachel's place. The homeowner association are requiring their people to put in their sidewalks. And they're putting them in the right of way of the highway department. But the highway department does not do maintenance on these. So the question is, how about the legal aspect? If somebody comes along, trips and, you know, breaks a leg or fall and hurts themselves. So to do that, what we've got in here, a statement specifically stating, and we're going to have a note on the plats. It says the county will not be responsible for sidewalk maintenance. Regardless, if it's inside or outside of the public right of way. Uh, if, if the sidewalks are being installed, they're supposed to be on the construction drawings. Now, Rachel's place, again, the homeowner association is requiring this and they're not part of their construction. So this is an attempt to try to, to, to deal with the sidewalks. And I don't, I don't know if there's a better way to handle this or, or what. I don't know if there's a better way to handle this, or, or what, the, we were, we're asking, we're telling, also, if they, if they put them in, they have to be designed by ADA standards. But at the same time, we're saying we're not, we're not responsible for. That's, that's been a, kind of a big challenge for us.
So when you talk about the liability aspect, I mean, we've got a statement in there that says individual lot owners or homeowners, um, association are responsible for the maintenance, but is it just up to the parties involved if there is a liability issue? I mean, cause I guess what I'm wondering here is-
No, it's like, it's like our lawyer told us, uh, you can sue anybody, and if, and if something happens, they're, they're gonna name the county.
Sure.
Um, as parties to a suit, I don't, I don't know the answer, as far as liability situations. We were just trying to, we want to emphasize, uh, to all who bring in those, that the sidewalks, that the county's not gonna do the maintenance, it's been a policy, this is just putting it in writing.
Why wouldn't you just add the word "and liability" at the end of that sentence? The county will not be responsible for sidewalk maintenance or liability.
That's not, I can do that. Again, this will, uh-
Which, it may not protect us from it, but-
It sounds, sounds a little tougher.
Lets everyone know where we are on this, yeah, at least talk about it.
Yeah, that I did.
So.
What's the reasoning about the two-foot grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk?
What we've done, the two-foot, we're gonna change that to five feet.
Don't.
Okay.
I think if you went five feet, nobody'd put in sidewalks anymore, you'd kinda be discouraging the use of it, uh, discouraging that, and that's a, sidewalks are a big thing for people out walking around.
There's a couple things, um, of course, five feet, I think, in, or most of our places, we'll put that sidewalk outside of the right of way. But also, the five feet, if you got a two-foot strip, you can put a, you can put a mailbox in there. Most of the time, it's very difficult to keep your grass growing, because of the heat from the sidewalk and stuff, it'll bake it. It, it becomes, I don't know. So our thinking was, uh, and it's all has, it also has to do with, uh, trying to remember the wording, our, uh, this actually is a pretty good, uh, recommendations from our consultant over here, is when you're putting in, um, the ADA stuff at the curb, there's a, a width thing that makes it easier to deal with and put it in.
If you want to just, if, if, Mr. Chairman, we, our consultant team is here, if it's okay, if you could come up with a-
Okay.
I apologize, I couldn't remember the wording we were talking about, so.
My name's Brett Smith, and we, we did talk about this one quite a bit, and, and I can tell you, as a consultant, or as an applicant in Wilson County, we're struggling with it there too, there's no easy answer to it, cause same thing, we have a client that wants to build sidewalks, Wilson County doesn't allow sidewalks. Uh, I know that where I used to live in Franklin, Franklin makes you put in an access easement behind the right of way, which is real interesting, because Franklin's basically saying, the sidewalk and the public are on your property. Now, we never had anybody trip and fall, but I don't know if the county, or if the city would have been responsible, if our homeowner's insurance would have been responsible for that, but, uh, that's one way Franklin's done it. What we talked about is that two-foot grass strip, there's nothing you can really do with it. We said if we made it five feet, or five and a half, then when you have the handicap ramps, you know, from the pavement, to make up that six-inch curb height, they're six feet long, well, now they're nice and clean, they go from the face of the gut, face of the curb, right to the back of the sidewalk, you don't have those little funky, landings and half, you know, side flares and go up with a little more ramps, it's just a nice, clean face of curb to back a sidewalk, you know, six-foot handicap ramp. The other thing is landscape architect, is, it starts getting big enough, if you want to do street trees, you can put them in there now. You know, that is, you could start having that, that line, street tree effect, cause if you're going to do curb and gutter and sidewalk, it's a much more formal, much more streetscape looking appearance, uh, that's a nice area to start getting a, you know, three-inch caliber tree in there, right off the bat, so, that was our thinking on it. But the whole fundamental sidewalk question's gotta be answered, and then we can figure out how far back we want it.
Okay, then I'm confused on this paragraph, the first sentence is, if sidewalks are installed, the minimum width shall be five feet, so, is the five feet?
That's the sidewalk width.
Right, right, that's what I'm asking, okay, so where is the, where's that grassy space referenced?
Two sentences down.
Two sentences down, okay.
Almost two little paragraphs down. Is there say five feet or two feet?
This is five.
This is five.
Now, we do need to add our detail, which we're able to come up with.
Right.
Point, the details in the back, the, the road sections.
Right.
It's not updated to this five feet, that came out in a meeting, but until y'all to tell us, you know, kinda where you want to go, we're not gonna keep updating that detail, we'll update the language, and then we'll update the detail with whatever y'all decide.
So we're wanting to move to the country and bring the city with us, is that?
There's a lot, apparently, there's a lot of applications wanting to do that.
Yeah.
Three-inch caliber tree soon, but soon becomes a street tree.
And, and I say a three-inch caliber tree, because, you know, when I, when I spec a, a tree in a, in a parking lot, or in a sidewalk, where somebody tall can walk down, like Dale can walk down the street right off day one, we want to be able to limit that thing up six or seven feet. Anything smaller, a three-inch caliber tree's gonna look like a palm, or like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree, you know, just, it'll just look dinky, so you really need a good-sized tree right off the bat, to limit up tall enough that people can walk under it. And unless you're going a ten-foot parkway or something, you really need three-inch caliber parking lot, same thing.
Don't you have problems with roots getting up under the sidewalk, and up under the road base, and tearing it up?
Depends on the tree species, depends on the road base, it depends on how long you're talking about, the soil conditions. We have, we have specified root barriers before, uh, you know, on certain projects, you know, maybe ten linear feet centered up on the trees, which basically forces those feeder, you know, those, those roots to go down and underneath. That's another liability thing, though, to think about, that's something else that we may want to do in the landscape ordinance, is say that it's an HOA thing.
And can, if you have underground utilities, can you put your electric transformers between the curb and the sidewalk?
It's one where you have to coordinate, and when we do street trees, we have to get all the utilities there, we have to get the water, the sewer, the storm, and the electrical, all figured out where it's going, and the streetlights, and forgot where we can put trees left, oh yeah, and the driveways, if it's front loaded. So it can be, it can be very hard to get a street tree plan done sometimes with all that stuff, yes, sir? Not saying you can't do it, but you gotta wanna do it.
Again, I just hate to eliminate, force people to eliminate sidewalks from neighborhoods when people want them so much to be off, they want to walk off of the street, they don't want to be walking out in traffic.
I, I don't disagree with you, with that, I just, it just, sidewalk was a topic that we thought we needed to address, and, you know, this is a draft, uh, just one way to handle it.
And I think that sidewalks too, it's, it's an issue, you know, and I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Mr. Riverwater, that it is a, this is an amenity that you want to provide, but I think there's more to it than just laying down some concrete, and saying, hey, we have sidewalks, you know, there are other things that have to be considered in the big picture, and these are kind of the things that we're thinking about, we're not saying that we're gonna require street trees, just saying that that was, kind of the thinking that went behind that, if somebody wanted to do that, five feet would make more sense than two feet. So, we're not saying that they have to do that, but, you know, I, I think there needs to be, maybe, like, I don't know if you want to call like a middle of a road approach or something like that, but, you know, I, I just don't feel comfortable saying that sidewalks can be put into subdivisions, but then don't really put any guidelines behind, how they're gonna operate and why they're in there.
Yeah, I'm good with the guidelines, it's just five feet just seems like an awful long way from the street.
Actually, I'd rather it be five and a half or six. Either, either you, what were you gonna say, Randy?
I was gonna say, it really doesn't impact, cause you can still fit.
Randy, can you come up? Yeah, I'm sorry.
And again, Randy Caldwell, I think the other thing we discussed is, it still fits within the right of way width, so it's not like you're forcing them to dedicate more right of way to get that five foot in here, we just think that's a much cleaner look, uh, from a streetscape standpoint, and I think there's also some engineering issues that come into play important with the handicap ramp application and all that. So whether somebody wants to put a sidewalk in there or not, it's still gonna fit within that fifty-foot right of way, which is not gonna discourage them from doing it, cause they're not having to dedicate additional right of way, if, if that makes sense. So I think it all comes down to look, making the handicap ramps work appropriately, and then, again, if somebody wants to put a streets, a street tree in there, again, as I think as Doug said, nobody's asking them to do that, but there are some applicants that may want to apply that application, go to the effort of doing that, it's gonna be a consistent look throughout the county, i- if that helps at all. Now, I just wanted to bring that up, that it's, we're not asking for additional right of, cause we've had that discussion, whether you bring down, reduce the right of way as a result of that.
Look, with a five-foot space, won't that encourage people now to come and plant low hedges and shrubs in that area between the sidewalk and the, and the back of the curb and?
In, in all the neighborhoods I've lived in that have it, I've never, I haven't really seen that done. It, it, it's, it's, it's a pretty clean look most of the time, the biggest thing I could see being a problem, frankly, is if cars are parked in the driveways and you, and you block the sidewalks. Add one more layer to it, we need to make sure that the garage setback is, say, twenty feet from the back of the sidewalk, from the back of the right of way, so that if a car's pulled behind the garage, it's not blocking the sidewalk. Does that make sense? It's like Doug said, if you allow the sidewalks, then how much do we start regulating the sidewalks, to the point that we regulate to the point that, where now we do have some liability in it? And that's some of the discussion, we're letting, you know, come, since it's a work session, that's some of the candid discussion we've had, we start regulating to a point, hey, we've taken some, some ownership of this thing. So, it, it's a tough one, and, and like I said, as an applicant, we're struggling with that in Wilson County right now. We, our client wants to do sidewalks, the builders want to do sidewalks. How, how you dovetail that into the county standards is, it's a, it's a challenge.
So, Dale, is your, is your wording has currently written that you would like all sidewalks to be a minimum five-foot grass area? Or can they do two, if they just want to do a conventional sidewalk, but they're allowed to do, if they want to do a streetscape kind of a deal, then they'd have to go to a five-foot, how, how are you wording it?
Well, the way we've got it worded is that it would be a minimum of five feet, and we can reword that, uh, you know, to, to allow what you just said, um.
Cause I, I don't, first of all, I don't think every developer was gonna want to plant trees next to the curb. And I don't know that as a homeowner, I would want trees all along the curb. Um, and I am concerned about the driveway depth, having to push the setback for the, for the driveways back. And I am certainly concerned about roots interfering and destroying sidewalk and curb, more sidewalk than curb, cause that'd be the first thing to go. But, um, you know, I, I would, if some, if a developer came in and wanted to do that, I would be happy for him to do that, but I don't know that I want to require every subdivision to have to have a five-foot grass area. And, you know, and, and another thing too, that just puts people a little bit closer to my front door, and I don't really like that. You know? So.
I've never lived in subdivision, so, you know, like my cats, but I, I, to me, either you go the five feet back, or you put the sidewalk next to the curb. Because the two-foot strip is basically-
It's no man's land.
And aggravation to maintain for the homeowner.
Yeah.
So. That, that allows a place to put the mailbox though, so people pushing their baby carriage doesn't run into your mailbox. Yeah, because mailboxes are half as big as the house now.
Yeah.
And from-
And there is a little value to that strip, I live in an older neighborhood, and sidewalks were retrofitted, um, and they're actually across the street from me, and, and I'm on a pretty main road, so I see lots of foot traffic every day, you know, and so you've got kids riding bikes on those, you've got people pushing strollers on those, I mean, everybody uses them. And so, I, I like the idea of that little bit of grassy space, because if two people have to pass each other, you're either going in somebody's yard, or somebody's going in the street. So, it just gives you a little bit of cushion, and I don't think two feet is unreasonable.
Yeah.
And all the power poles, if you have overhead utilities, power poles can go in there, or sometimes street lights can go in that area too.
And, and living in a sub, myself, living in a subdivision that has sidewalks and has a two-foot strip, uh, I do like the separation between the curb and the sidewalk, you know, I, I kind of echo what Ms. Allen is saying, I don't like feeling like, when you're, I, I've, I've walked, I'm sure we all have walked at some point on a sidewalk that's right next to the curb, with traffic going by, you know, I like a little bit of separation between where the cars are going and where the people are walking, I think that's important, um, you know, in my mind.
Well, and if I'm walking the dog, I don't want the dog to step off the curb, and now he's in the street, you know?
Like I said, I ain't lived in a subdivision, so it's, it's a little far, to make.
Infrastructure's odd too, if it's right to the back of curb, we're not inspecting it, we don't know what they're doing to our curb, and if they have to go in and dig it out, they'll, they'll ride it next to it.
I mean, I like the grass strip, I'm just not sure that you have to mandate that it's gotta be five feet, that's a big jump from two feet. I gotta sleep on that one.
I'm just comfortable with the two to five feet, like you said, I mean-
Yeah. I would do a minimum of two, or maybe even a minimum of two and a half or whatever, cause I know that grass is hard to keep growing. I'm just not sure I want to mandate five, as a minimum. I gotta think on that.
Well, we'll probably have another, uh, work session, so, think about it, and I'd be glad to change, um, we, we felt this would have been a little easier, for us construction, a little bit easier to deal with, but the main thing is, trying to deal with it so that they know that the county doesn't do maintenance on it, either the homeowner or the homeowner association's gonna have to do the maintenance on it, and we'll add the liability term. And then the, the bottom line, and, and talking to Josh, is, they can sue anybody, and so if something happens, they'll sue the homeowner, the county.
Yeah.
I just want to throw, there's always the possibility, if somebody wants to do sidewalks, they just do a PUD, and do all these sections then, you know, they, they give us this, whatever they want to do, they give us the post section, and maybe that's how we handle it, is if you're gonna do a sidewalk, and rather than handling, you do it through a PUD, you answer all these other issues, so we don't have to regulate it, otherwise, you stick with the standard, that, that's just an idea. And then you just answer it all right there on your own development ticket, and we don't have to try to think through every scenario.
Kinda like that.
Well, I mean, yeah, and-
Did you have anything else that you?
No, I think that covers.
But that's all, that would all be done up front, so if you had to set back your garage, driveway, or things like that, that would all be-
It'd all be part of the PUD.
That'll be part of the PUD at that point, yeah.
All those things at one time, and we're not trying to think through every scenario that could come up.
Yeah, and I, I think that, tho- those are pretty much, I mean, we've been here for a good couple hours now, we've had a lot of good discuss, Mr. Brooks, can you come up to the microphone, so people can? I'm sorry, that should be Mr. Chairman's job, I'm sitting here jumping, jumping authority here.
From the standpoint of the highway department, I would like to see the sidewalks moved completely out of the right of way, even if that means we have to change our right of way in some cases. Uh, our thirty-three-foot streets with, uh, two-foot curb and gutter, you know, they're in a fifty-foot right of way, then we'd only, we, the face of the sidewalk would be six feet and six inches, I believe, from the back of curb. And that way, the liability issue, in my mind, goes away, it's no longer in our right of way. So on our twenty-four-foot streets with a two-foot curb and gutter, we would be six foot, if we changed our right of way from fifty feet to forty feet, it would be six feet from back of curb to face of sidewalk. I understand your point, you know, that becomes a pretty wide area, people are gonna want to plant things and that, I, I don't really, you know, I haven't thought into it far enough to know how to resolve that, but, I would like to see the sidewalks completely out of our right of way, because I believe, if they're in our right of way, at some point, they'll become our responsibility. So.
Okay. That was a lot of math, and I'm having a hard time deciphering it.
Eric, will you bring me my yellow notebook up there briefly?
If, the, the right of way, if you had a five-foot, if you followed Dale's scenario with the five-foot grass, and then a five-foot sidewalk, you, you're saying the edge of that five-foot sidewalk is still not, or is, or is not in the right of way?
Well, some, some streets are twenty-four feet wide.
Okay.
Some are thirty-three, depending on the type of street it is. Uh, assuming that we're in a residential neighborhood, and we're gonna have a two-foot, uh, back of curb to face of gutter, where we got a, a rollover curb.
Yeah.
That's a foot wide, in a gutter, that's a foot wide. So, in, in that scenario, in a forty-foot right of way, from the center line of the road, to the back of curb, we'd have fourteen feet. If we're in a forty-foot right of way, that would give us six feet of right of way past the back of our curb, so start the sidewalk there, instead of that five feet. Start it at six feet. Now, width of sidewalk and all that, you know, I, I'm concerned with where the face of sidewalk is.
So you're thirty-three foot width, you're proposing a fifty-foot?
Fifty-foot right of way, which is currently what we have, I believe.
Yeah.
And that would, that would mean the same foot, same two-foot curb and gutter, we would have six foot six.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because, you know, sidewalks are going to, sidewalks are going to crack, sidewalks are going to settle. You know, tree roots are going to inundate under that sidewalk, whether it be from between the curb and the sidewalk or from the yard, you know. And if we ever, if we're ever named in a lawsuit where someone has tripped and fell because of a cracked or uneven sidewalk, if we, if we're ever named in that lawsuit, if we lose that lawsuit, then all of a sudden, sidewalks all over the county are going to be our responsibility. And, you know, I won't get into the whole thing about revenue compared to expenditures, but we just can't take on sidewalks. We can't. Can't do it.
Mr. Brooks, doesn't a lot of the utilities also run down that right of way?
Yes, sir.
Like the gas and the water and that sort of thing? So, when we start moving this sidewalk back and forth, we also are going to be sitting within those situations, too?
Well, it becomes an engineering issue at that point, you know. If we're going to say that we will accept a 40-foot right of way where there is a 24-foot street, then, yeah, the engineer, you know, the engineering has to be...
But if we go by what you're saying there, we'd move off of that, too.
You mean the other public utilities, like power, gas?
Yeah. Because they primarily stay within that right of way most of the time, don't they?
Yes.
So, like what you were saying, if we just say nothing within that right of way...
Well, I'm just saying sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. No sidewalk within that right of way.
Moves away from all the problems.
Well...
Possibly.
Possibly.
Possible.
I just, you know, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. But if we have a sidewalk that's inside of our right of way, like sooner or later, we're going to be named in a lawsuit. I'm just trying to avoid that. Anybody else?
Several officers ready to go, Doug.
Yes, sir. Well, and what I would suggest is, I mean, I don't think we're ready to schedule this for a public hearing at this point. You know, and state law does require that we do 30-day notice before any changes to the subregs are made. So, at this point, I think probably what you would, we've received a lot of input here, and we have a few things we're going to work on. I'm going to talk with Mr. Corbett and Mr. Brooks about the possibility of maybe developing a few diagrams or something about what they were just talking about that might help us to learn a little more visually, like myself. Get, that's, I think that'd be effective, especially with the technology we have here. It'd be, it'd be easy to bring that up, so...
Give us a diagram of what Mr. Brooks just told you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If that, I mean, we'll work on that. And between now and then, there were several other things that were brought up, as far as the fire hydrant requirements, the sidewalk, other things. We'll kind of take inventory of everything and kind of come back. I mean, based on what I'm hearing from the commission at this point, it sounds like, at this point, it sounds like you're comfortable with the majority of the things that we're talking about. There are some questions out there, and we'll try to shore those up some. But between now and the next day meeting, I think we could have another work session.
Yeah, I would say we're well over 80% in agreement, so we just can't work on the last little bit.
Right. And we can do that over the next month. And then our next day meeting in April, we can have those issues. And if you think of any other questions between now and then, of course, you know, let us know what those are, and we'd be more than happy to take a look into those.
April 8th is our next six o'clock meeting?
Yes, sir.
Right.
I believe that's correct.
Next meeting is Monday at the 8th of April, I think, at six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
The legal issues that might be brought up would probably be good to get Josh to comment on those.
Yes, sir.
And kind of bring us up to date there as to where we are.
Will do.
Would a PUD even take care of all of the issues that the road superintendent brought up?
Well, I think it would, because, I mean, in the PUD, they're specifying right in there what they're proposing. I mean, even the regulations as such, even make mention of sidewalks in PUDs. You know, that's kind of spelled out on the front end. I guess the question is, as a commissioner, are you comfortable saying that any developer that wants to put sidewalks in their development has to go the PUD route?
No.
So, I mean, that's something, well, I mean, that's something else we'll kind of toy with over the next month, and we'll bring some recommendations, or at least some proposals, maybe not recommendation, at this point.
Anything else, Doug?
I have nothing else.
Okay, very good. Appreciate your patience as we've gone through this today. It's been, once again, informative. We'll have to go through another one or two before we're ready for our public hearing, but it's been informative. Also, we may want to chime in a little bit more with some of our county commissioners that are so passionate about the safety and of fire protection.
Yes, sir.
Because it's going to create a tremendous amount of discussion when it's presented to the county commission. So, we may want to get some of those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this won't go to county commission. This stops at planning. The subdivision regulations stop at planning commission, so they don't have to go any further than this.
It's not going to stop discussion.
Oh, I agree. And I still, yes. I mean, the only reason I bring up that point is just so everybody understands that this won't go to county commission. But your statement about getting them involved is a good idea. I wasn't trying to refute that.
There's been a lot of passionate discussion on fire protection and the whole idea of safety. And as we get into these public hearings, we probably really want, especially the ones that have been so vocal about it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And us talking about addressing those, some of those concerns during this process, so... But let me ask you, Jeff, would it be more appropriate then to invite them to our next workshop as opposed to wait till the public hearing? I think it might be good at our next county commission meeting for Doug, just to say what we've gone through, and then even pass out some drafts to the county commissioners and show them where all of those public safety issues are.
Yes, sir.
Especially around fire protection, and ask for their input at that time. I think that would be sufficient. And it's even possible to have more conversation through, maybe, Public Works. Does that sound right, Steve? Maybe Public Works, because I think you report to Public Works every month anyway.
Right, yes, sir.
As to what's going on. And just share as much as we can without opening it up to a whole line of presenting it to them. But there are some real issues over there that we get into, things that just last forever as it relates to even where we should have tankers, you know, and what those tankers should be regulated. This just goes on and on and on. But this is a passionate issue for several commissioners, and I understand that, and we ought to understand that, too, that we may not have to go to them. But if we don't get their input, they're not going to be really pleased with us, and we'll start questioning and challenging a lot of things.
Yes.
As we do go to them with things that we really need.
Right. And again, yeah, the point for me bringing that up was not that we didn't want to involve them. It was just simply saying that this, as a document, doesn't go to them for consideration.
Understood 100%, but still, to communicate with those guys.
Yes, absolutely.
Especially the major changes that we're talking about. And they've asked specifically for input as it relates to the public safety issues. And I can understand that, so we need to probably adhere to that.
Absolutely. We'll do it.
Anything else?
This is certainly a good setting to get that input.
It absolutely positively is. Next meeting is, as we said, April the 8th, 6:00 PM at the courthouse.
That's correct, sir.
We're joined.